So we can come back our -- okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The City of Southgate Special Counsel Meeting. Roll call please.
Mayor Davila.
Present.
Vice Mayor Barone.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Rosado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
San Iswain.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3 disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by council members is $1,900 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go into closed session. Can you read closed session items, please?
Item number one, conference with legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9a, 54954.9b, 3c, A Juan Herberth Herrera and Maria Esther Herrera versus Bruce W. Lloyd, City of Southgate at all. Item number two, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9c, one potential case. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This time, do we have anybody in the audience? We don't have nobody in the audience. Do we have any emails?
No emails, Mayor.
All right, thank you. City manager, is there anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, so with that, we'll go on to closed session.
Everyone, buenas tardes. I want to make the announcement for the Spanish translations. If you need translation in Spanish, raise your hand to the right for me to give you an audiobook for the translation in Spanish. Do you need translation in Spanish? Keep your hand up if you don't have audibles. Okay, they're going to pass one. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we are coming back from closed session. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session starting at 5:30 to discuss pending litigation. There was one item on the agenda, Juan Herrera and Maria Herrera versus Bruce Lloyd in the city of Southgate. This is a traffic accident that involved an employee and a vehicle of the city of Southgate. In closed session, the City Council received a report by the city attorney indicating it appeared that the city would be getting dismissed from that case. Mr. Lloyd has already been dismissed. There was no action taken in connection with that action. On item number two, the City Council had a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. There was a discussion made with respect to one case of potential litigation that might be brought by the city. And under the government code, there's no reportable action taken and nothing further to discuss at this time about that one case. There are no other items that were discussed in closed session. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. City Attorney. At this time, I'm going to open it to the items you want to speak on the items in closed session. If not, do we have anybody in the...
No emails, Madam Mayor.
No emails, all right, great, thank you. So that will close the closed session. And can I get a motion to adjourn the special meeting? We've got a motion in a second. We are adjourned. Okay, good evening, everyone again. This time, I'm going to call the Southgate City Council regular meeting to order. And at this time, if... Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Davila?
Present.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas?
Present.
So do we have Pastor Angel Solors Anoia? Pastor, please come up. We'll do the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief, can you do us the honor, please? Pastor?
Our Father, and Son, and God, we thank you for this time. Your word says that wherever there's two or three gathering in the name, there you are there. And we trust that you are here tonight. We pray that you will come and give us wisdom, help. Help as a result in any situation, any matters, any problems that we might be going through. We believe that you are with us and you can help us go through all this attend last tonight. I pray for the city of Southgate. I pray for the leaders and the board tonight. And I pray that you will give us wisdom, a lot of wisdom to resolve any matter. And we thank you. Your word says that even though the earth might tremble, you are with us. And we trust in you, we pray in you. And we thank you for the opportunities that you give us to still come before you and pray and trust you as our God and our help. I pray this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Chief?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk? Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3. Disclosure compensation for meeting attendance by City Council members is $1,900 regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. Before we continue with our regular agenda, I want to take this moment to pay some respect to one of our own formal chief of police, Robert Todd. Some of you here might remember him. He passed away Friday, and we are deeply saddened by his passing. And I just wanted to remember him with a little bit of what he was here in Southgate. He was a police chief. And in 1977, Robert Todd was hired as a police cadet by the Southgate Police Department. In 1979, he was hired as a police officer assigned to the patrol division traffic, where he served as a motor officer and then to the service division working special agent as a detective. In 1988, he was promoted to police sergeant assigned to the patrol division, the service division, and as the detective bureau sergeant in an administrative division. In 1990, he was promoted to police lieutenant, assigned to the patrol division as watch commander and to the services division as detective bureau lieutenant. In 1997, he was promoted to police captain, assigned to the patrol division, the services division, and administration division as captain in charge. In 2003, he was appointed chief of police serving the department and the cities until his retirement in January 20, 2009. Chief Todd was a member of the Southgate PD for 32 years and worked his way up to organize the highest rank of police chief in 2003. Retiring in 2009 upon retirement, Chief Todd, who was a licensed and practiced attorney, worked for Stone &amp; Busailin, I hope I said that right, Palceya, a legal defense attorney, law firm defining police officers. Chief Todd was instrumental in bringing new technology to the department during his tenure. He is remembered as playing a significant role in the recall effort in 2003 and protecting the police department from threatened dissolution during those times, who was loved and admired by many residents, business owners, city hall staff, and police officers. And I can say, he was just an outstanding person. I got to work with him since, from 2003 to 2009, and he did a lot for the community. So he will be deeply missed, even if we didn't see him, we knew that he was out there. And to his family, you know, our deepest sympathy goes out to them. And Sue and his sons, I mean, just, you know, if you see them, Chief, our call, please give them our love. And he will be... I don't know if you want to say something or any of my colleagues, but this is in his memory.
I do. The command staff and I went to visit the Todd family yesterday. So they're deeply, you know, grief-stricken. One thing about Chief Todd is he actually was born and raised and grew up in Southgate, went to Southgate High School, started his career as a cadet, much like, you know, a lot of the explorers who grew up in this organization, and he gave so much to this community. He was a good mentor to me. He promoted me as a sergeant and lieutenant. He just had this love for his family that is just hard to explain. And yeah, it's painful, so the family was appreciative. I send condolences on behalf of the city. And hopefully, at the services, I'll be able to take an in memoriam certificate to the family and present it. But he's a very important part of the history of this department during the darkest times. So let's not forget, you know, I may not be here right now because he helped save this department. So we'll always remember Bob, thank him for his service, and appreciate everything he's done for us. Thank you.
So yes, so with that, I mean, if we can just hold a moment of silence, and we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in his memory. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on with item number one, please.
The City Council will consider receiving and filing a presentation on the Southgate mobile application.
Okay, and the presentation will be, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we wanted to give you an opportunity to get an update on our innovative Southgate mobile app and give you an update on how it's working, how we're working through some of the growing pains of getting a feature like this operating, and then also highlight some of the work we're doing to use the product with illegal dumping and how we're partnering with the UWS trash haulers to try to make sure we're doing that service in an efficient way. With that, I want to hand it over to our deputy director of Public Works, Eric, to take it away. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I think he, Mr. City Manager summarized it pretty well, so I'll take any questions. No. Thank you for having me tonight. So this presentation is going to be three parts. I'm going to do the first part, which is just an overview of the city app and the great features it has and how it's going to make everybody's life simple. Our friends from UWS are here to do the second portion, which is to specifically focus on the illegal dumping issue that we're experiencing here in the city. I know it's a growing concern. So really, what we're trying to do is send a message to marry the two concepts together, encourage the public to put in requests for any item pickups and illegal dumpings that they may see in the app so that we can go out there and pick it up more expeditiously. And then Giselle from our City Matters office will wrap this up with a pretty cool video that she's put together. So with that, do we have the PowerPoint presentation? Is this the presentation? Okay. Okay. So our city app is pretty much following the trend of most other cities. They're utilizing some form of a city app or online service request technology. So we're kind of keeping up with the times. Our Go Southgate app went live in April of last year, so shy of a year now that we've been utilizing it. Really what it is for the public, it's just a very convenient option to report any type of service request. And for city staff, it really helps us because it's helped us kind of streamline our operation a little bit, make it a little bit more efficient. It gives us a much better way of tracking requests that come in. Prior to that, we were just relying on emails and phone calls. The message was kind of all over the place, but with the city app, it kind of helps us, funnel those requests a little bit more efficiently. Apps can be requested 24/7, 365 days a year. One thing I do want to emphasize, though, is that this app is not to be used for emergency purposes. So if someone still needs 911 services, then they should utilize 911. The app is really just for non-emergencies, with the exception of public works emergencies, though. Any type of public works emergency that's after hours, for example, a tree branch may have fallen on a car, or if a tree fell, or if there's sewer overflowing from a manhole, those should be reported to our police department's non-emergency number. And the app is designed to be used with any operating platform, so anybody with an Android or an Apple should be able to download from their App Store relatively easy, just like any other app. As I mentioned, the app went live in April of 2024, and since then, we've had 500 downloads of the app. Obviously, the message, again, we want to try to send out is to see that number grow and have more and more people download the app and start utilizing it. Next slide, please. So obviously, the app is designed for all city services, but the public works department is the... We get the bulk of the requests, and the first line there is just kind of some of the more common requests that we get in public works. So anything from potholes to graffiti, illegal dumpings, damaged sidewalks, streetlight allergies. There's requests that also go to our police department, such as maybe if there's any parking issues. Requests also get routed to our court enforcement department. One of the more common ones that I've been seeing are anything related to street vendors or some property maintenance issues. As I mentioned before, the app is designed to really streamline communication. We recently worked with our consultant that devised the app for us to integrate it with our work order management system. So now the two are kind of mirroring and talking to each other. What that means is when we close out an app request or close out a work order, the two sync. So when one closes out, the other one closes out better. It's very time-efficient for us because it's less steps for us to actually have to go back and close out a work order. Having the two talk to each other just makes it a little bit more efficient. It provides real-time tracking and notifications. So basically, what that means is once any updates we make to a request that we get, if we have to refer to another department or if we close it, notifications are sent to the users knowing that edits or updates have been made. So it allows the user to be able to track their requests throughout every step of the process. And one of the features that we implemented, which I know is very important, when we close out requests, we always try to include a photo just to show that the order hasn't completed. So for example, if someone had called about an uplifted sidewalk and we went and patched it, we'll take a photo and we'll submit that photo along with the request to close it out. So the end user then knows that that request has been completed with a photo showing the work that's been done. Again, as I mentioned, we're about 10 months into using this app, and since then, we've had over 1,000 service requests submitted. I think the number might even be a little bit over 11 under the last time I checked. We've had 500 Southgate citizens download the app. And I think this chart that you see here really tells a story. These are the most common types of requests that we get, which is pretty consistent to what I see with other cities who use some kind of app. Graffiti is obviously a hot topic. Bulky items, which we're going to talk a little bit more, and illegal dumping, that's high up there as well. But this chart, I think, just gives a good summary of the type of requests that we're getting on our end and having to refer to other departments. Next slide. And what this slide highlights is what we feel is our average turnaround time on some of the more common requests. Turnaround time, what I'm defining here is how long it takes us to get to these issues, not necessarily how long it takes us to close a request. So with items such as graffiti and potholes, we get to those pretty quickly, usually a day or two. Sidewalk repairs, you know, anywhere from three to four days for just a temporary repair. By temporary, that could be one of two ways for us. We either patch a displaced sidewalk or we try to grind it down, just depending on the severity of it. Streetlight allergies, that could be anywhere from same day, next day, to an extended period of time, just depending on how many lights are on a certain circuit. Usually, if it's just one or two lights, we can get to that pretty quickly. It's a little more complex where wiring was stolen. That takes a little bit longer because we have to usually run whole new wiring and conduit. With regards to the dumping and abandoned items, that has a range of about one to seven days, just depending on a couple of things. One, service days, because that's how UWS tackles it, based on the service day of when your trash is picked up. And it also could just be if there's just a lot of bulky items that we don't have adequate resources for that particular day to get to, it may have to wait a couple of days until we get, like, say, a bigger truck, if there's abandoned furniture to pick those up. But our friends at UWS can elaborate a little bit on that, too. So... And one thing I just, in closing, want to emphasize is that it's important to note that when residents submit these requests, and again, just going back to this slide here, it may take some time to either address these concerns or to just be able to close them out. And it also just depends on what the request is. So for example, if someone's requesting that there's just a street that's in really bad shape, and we determine that it needs to be ultimately resurfaced, that's beyond our capabilities and field ops to do any kind of potholing, we would refer requests like that to our engineering division and have them add it to a CIP project down the road. And based on that backlog, that's going to determine when that gets addressed. So it's important for the residents and the public to understand that we're going to be tracking requests, but understanding that certain requests are going to take longer than others. So I just wanted to make that point clear. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to our friends at UWS. Matt Blackburn, he's president? Vice president. He'll talk about the second portion of our presentation.
Do you want to ask questions now?
If I have a quick question, since you bring it up...
So if it does get referred over to the city engineer for a future CIP project, does that get relayed to the resident who submitted the complaint on the app?
Yes, what we're going to do is we're going to instruct our crews who monitor these requests. So the way that the request, when they come in, they get assigned to a specific staff member in each department or division. So we're going to request that our staff members, if that's going to be the case, to close it out with an explanation that it's been referred to, for example, our engineering department or another department to be considered for a CIP project down the road. That way, they know the app's been responded to and it's been closed and it's been addressed just at a later date.
Okay, great, because I mean, I see it when sometimes we, we submit graffiti remover on private property, where, you know, I get responded back saying, hey, you know, we understand it, we, we see it, we've addressed it with the property owner. We're working with them to clear it up, and then it may take, you know, two weeks for it to be cleared up. But, you know, that the report is closed, I just want to make sure that's being done, even with we're referring the project to an engineer for service.
Right, and our goal is to just not close out a request. Our goal is to close it out with some kind of explanation if that's going to be the case.
That's, that's the goal. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Eric, so just as far as follow-up, every, every inquiry is, does the person get a response from every inquiry? Or they just, if they submit a request for a bulky item, whatever, in graffiti, do they get a response? So they know that, or do they have to just wait and see that it's taken care of, or how does that work?
Yes, so when, when a request is submitted, the user will get a, an acknowledgement that the submit has gone through or the request has gone through. And as I mentioned before, anytime there's an update, meaning either we've addressed the issue and we've closed it out, or if we have to refer it to another person in the city or another department, they will get those updates. So they're going to be in that chain of communication throughout the entire process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So I'm here to talk a little bit about-
Can you please state your name?
Sorry. Matt Blackburn with Universal Waste, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the bulky item and illegal dumping program. You could go to the next slide if you don't mind. Could you do the next slide? Oh. Sorry, it was delayed on my- Okay, so just as a quick reminder for bulky items, all residential units, which is all single-family homes, all apartments, and every unit within an apartment or town home or multifamily complex is eligible for 10 bulky item pickups per month. We ask that all of those service requests are submitted through customer service prior to be setting out at the curb. And then those collections will occur either on their next service day or another day that we can determine that the items will be out with the customer and agree on a scheduled pickup. Currently, we don't accept construction debris, hazardous waste, items longer than four feet, and all items that they set out the curb must be able to be picked up or handled by two men crew. Additionally, we have e-waste collection available for all residential and multifamily complexes. E-waste is typically anything with a cord, so anything with a cord will pick up separately and make sure that it's recycled. And then as a quick reminder, Sharps collection is available for all residential units as well. They can contact us, we're a mail-in program, and we cover all the costs of that program. In 2024, we collected 34,652 bulky items that were called in, reported, scheduled, and removed from residences within the city of Southgate. That's, doesn't include any of the illegal dumping or the automatic sweeps that we do on a daily basis. This is just what was reported.
Mark, can you touch on what Sharp collections are?
Sure, I'm sorry, it's, um, anyone that needs like diabetics, if you do any kind of blood work or needle injections at home, those are all part of the Sharps program. So rather than having to take it back to a pharmacy, we send you a container that comes in the mail, you fill it up, and then when it's done, it's prepaid mailing, and you can ship it out to be properly disposed of and recycled. So as far as the illegal dumping, and I know this map's kind of small, I brought some copies, if you guys, I can leave them with you. But in August of 2024, the city had a contract previously with Long Beach Conservation Corps that ended, and then we assumed also the majority of the role, I believe, from city staff as well for illegal dumping. Prior to that, there were a lot of different, everybody was doing something different. We had a portion, city staff had some, and then the conservation corps picked up some. Since then, we've broken the city up into five days, and we do five daily sweeps. Each day, one time a week, we sweep that area for illegal dumping. This is items that are not called in, they're not reported through the app, they're not called to the city. They're just items we're driving up and down the street collecting to keep the streets clean. So you'll see in the map, there's five days, and then there are a couple areas you'll see noted in red. These are areas that we've determined to be high dumping areas or illegal dumping grounds. And so we hit those areas three times a week, even though they're outside of the collection, just to try to have more presence in the city and keep those collected. And then as far as requests for illegal dumping that have come directly to us from customers, we had about a doubling. So in 2023, we received about 500 calls. This 2024, we received just over 1,000 requests from residents calling us directly to report illegal dumping. So the nice part is we've been doing some outreach and education through the billing, trying to encourage customers to call us and report it, and we're starting to see some of those numbers increase. So obviously, it helps us respond faster and clean up the items sooner, so. So successes and challenges, so in addition to the illegal dumping, like I just said, as far as bulky item collection, we saw about a 10% increase from 2023 to 2024 in customers calling to report the items. We believe a lot of the illegal dumping is just, is items that should just be called in and reported and collected, but maybe customers aren't really sure how to do that or what that looks like. And so they get set up and turned out into be illegal dumping. So hopefully, with some of the more outreach and education and getting the new app in place, we can start to see more reporting so that those items don't become, you know, illegal dumped, they're actually reported properly and collected. Let's see here, we talked about the Long Beach Conservation Corps, and then increasing our outreach and education to residents to inform them about the programs as well. And I think after listening with the app, you know, we bill monthly to all the residents and we send out notices. You know, I'd like to work with the city staff and their team to see if there's a way that we can help advertise your app because, you know, we have direct contact every month for no additional charge. We can start sending out those notices and try to help build the participation in the app, which helps all of us ultimately. So we'll work with staff to see if we can get something like that put in. Some of the challenges, obviously, increased illegal dumping, you know, houseless residents are having a lot more illegal dumping on the streets that we're working through. One issue and one thing that we're working with staff on is illegal dumping in the railroads, the county right-ofways, the, the water, the storm drains, that kind of stuff. Right now, we're only collecting within like a 10-foot radius of the public street in those areas. And so I think that's something we can work on this year, is coordinating a little bit better with some of those other agencies to make sure that when those items are beyond that 10-foot point, someone's being notified so that those get collected and it doesn't fall back that, you know, either we didn't collect it or somebody at the city staff missed it. One thing we've done in a couple other cities is worked with surveillance cameras. They have portable surveillance systems for hot areas or known areas where illegal dumping takes place. Maybe we can work together to help fund one of those and, and put it strategically in the city, try to see who these repeat offenders are and see if we can help work with, you know, the police department and staff to see if we can help cut down on some of the legal dumping. And then the only other issue, I guess, or challenge would maybe be in the app, just the time that, from the time it comes in to the time it gets to us, and then it gets back to the app and closed out. I think that if we all work together, and I know that's part of the plan this year, is to integrate so those requests come directly to us, and we'll upload the completion with pictures and be able to expedite that turnaround time for the customers. So it's something we've started doing in a couple other cities that have a similar app, and I think if we work together, we can increase the response time, so. And then, other than that, these are just phone numbers to call for our office for customer service, and then the bottom one is for hazardous waste.
Mark, so when it, when it comes to apartment buildings, I, I think this is one of the most common concerns that I'm getting from residents is they live in an apartment building, they're in unit A, they make the call, they, the, the person asks them, oh, what's the name under the bill? They would, maybe don't know if it's the landlord's name, or they don't know, because they're paying a property management company, right? They don't know who the, the actual bill is under.
Okay.
And they're being told, you, we need to have that information. Is that something that they need to have to be able to get that bulky item pickup happen? Or can they just say, hey, I'm, I live on this address in unit A, and my stuff is going to be out in the, in the front where my trash gets picked up?
That should be the process. Typically, we don't set up requests or talk about a customer's bill without some information upfront, but I can work with customer service, and if those requests are being made, that's the first time I'm hearing about it, but I can take care of that.
Yeah, I know that. And the residents are feeling like, oh, well, if I don't have that information, okay, well, I, I, I'll, I'll try to get in and call back. And I'm worried that maybe some of those may be some of the illegal dumping where they're like, hey, I'm just going to put out my sofa. I'm getting a new sofa in next week, I got to get rid of this one, and they're leaving it out there. When, whatever ends up happening is that sofa becomes the next sleeping bed for the, the next transient that's, you know, going around in the area, right? I live near the Alameda corridor, and that's what happens in every single instance when a resident puts a sofa in the alleyway, you know, becomes a, a sleeping bed for, you know, somebody. So if we can just get that clarified and, and so that the residents know exactly what they need to inform the customer service rep when they call in.
Sure, I'll talk to customer service tomorrow.
Thank you.
I'm going to agree with that, with your comment, because the first thing they ask is for the account ID. And sometimes those residents who live in apartments don't have the account ID.
Okay.
So that would be good for you to look into that.
For sure, I will.
Okay, and it comes on the, yes, go ahead, city manager.
Thank you for this, and, and just a general thought or takeaway for the community. So it's amazing feature, I've worked at other cities, to have, and I live in a different one, but to have 10 pickups per site per month is amazing. You know, some cities have three pickups per year, so you get on your fourth pickup and you don't have any options. So I would just say to the community, call in your items, let them get scheduled. It's much easier for everyone, including the pickup, to know how many there'll be on their route, so they can plan it. If nobody calls and they just plunk them out there, there's two problems. One, the truck, they don't know how many people to send, but also it can be a violation of city code and you get a ticket and then you have to pay. So use the bulky item pickup, call, get it scheduled, and if you see your neighbors putting something out, let them know. You get 10 a month, you, you, basically, it's unlimited.
Yeah.
Call all you want, get it scheduled, work together, it's going to be great. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Giselle?
Thank you to Eric and Matt for showing us insight on how the app works. Now, I feel like more of us are educated on what the app is actually doing behind the scenes. So I'm here to give you a reminder on how to download the app, if there's anyone at home that still doesn't have it. So we created a video that walks you through the steps, so I'll have our city clerk play the video in a minute.
With the Go Southgate app, reporting service requests has never been easier. Download the app using Google Play or the App Store. Click under service request, you can create an account or create a request anonymously. Select the report type. Enter the location by using our pinpoint feature or enter the address. Feel free to add a picture of the request in any further description. It's that easy.
All right, great. Yes, like the video says, it's that easy to download the app. We've been doing a lot of outreach for different community events. We have the flyer there with the QR code. I know for National Night Out, we were out there giving out items when people downloaded the app. It's in our brochure, so we're going to continue the outreach, and hopefully, by next time, we see the numbers that the app downloads have downloaded, have been downloaded by a lot.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the presentation, Eric and Matt, thank you for the presentation. And I'm sure that all our residents here have, have the app, right? Nope. Well, this is, this is the time for you to use that app and take advantage of it. It's, it does really, it really works. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it, again, thank you. And, and with that, I want to open it to the audience, if you have any questions. Related to this, to these-
I'm not happy with this item here. Why isn't there an item report for this item? So I don't know how much we're paying for this fucking thing here. If you look at item two, that item report states 12,180. For this, I don't know how much we're paying for it, and I don't know if it's coming from the general fund for item, what is it, seven? That one, 176,000 from general fund. That's item six right there for a parking lot. Here, I have no idea how much we're paying or where it's coming from, so I'm not happy with that. So last year, we had a whole slew of people coming in here saying, this fucking thing doesn't work right. You know, I wouldn't wipe my ass with this trash. Why, you know, so, so the point is, I, I'm not opposed to us having this, but, you know, technology, it's just like anything else. You fix it, whether it's a streetlight or a sewage pipeline underground that needs to be repaired, you fix it. You just don't throw out the whole system, you fix, you fix it. Just, you know, unfortunately, you know, the last mayor, the 2024 mayor, you know, he, he pulled off this swindle and threw out our beloved Zoom system. I hope this isn't the case with, with this app. My recommendation, please, fix our app. What is the thing that our city treasurer's been advocating for us to have? Was it a technology, information technology director, or I forget what the job title is? Well, guess what? Downey has it. They have this position and have this, this person to, to fill this position. If you had this person working in this, what is it, information technology director, whatever it is, if you had that person, they would be on top of our technology, being able to fix them in real time and prioritize it, and not just let things go by the wayside. The other comment regarding Downey's app is that they have a feature that I would like to recommend and suggest. Apart from just requesting service for streetlights and trimming special tree, your trees that require special attention, you, the residents of Downey can actually request to put in, have a meeting with their city council member and have a phone meeting or an in-person meeting. So I would like to suggest that to the council members as a possibility of having that as a feature on our app. That's all.
Next, please.
Liz Reese from Kaufman, I want to actually vouch for this app. I used the previous app, which was pretty glitchy and, and actually had less response for it. This new app, I'm really impressed. I feel like I'm probably one of the biggest users. I, I, I always report it not in a sleep, but I, I do walk around my neighborhood a lot. I go jogging with my baby and, you know, walk my dogs. And I've reported tagging, I reported cracks on the sidewalk, and they get fixed pretty fast. And this weekend, while we were at the park, the, the little fire truck at the, at the northwest end of the park was tagged up pretty bad, and I reported it on the app. I hadn't done that for park issues. I've usually, you know, emailed park staff directly, but being the weekend, I'm like, oh, I, you know, I might as well give this a try. And, and I was pleasantly surprised that they got there within like 10 minutes and started wiping off the tagging. So it was pretty nice, and, and I'm definitely grateful for the responsiveness, for the tracking, and, and for the personal responses, too, on, on some of the comments. And I, I definitely feel really lucky to be able to have this for our city. And, and I hope that the outreach works out. When I've done canvassing for, for some of you guys, I've mentioned the app to a lot of the people that have complaints about the, the status of our streets. And I've told them, you know, it's up to you to report these things. I, I often see people complaining about the streets on a lot of the Facebook and Instagram. And I'm like, well, you know, you need to report them, there's this app, do it through there, easy. And people address it, and a lot of the people that I've told to, at least when I was canvassing, didn't know about it. And we're really happy to see that, that there is that option. So hopefully, word does get around and hopefully, people use it and, because it, it works. And it is a really good tool to hold folks in, in the departments accountable to addressing the, the problems because, you know, we can't expect the city officials to know if they're not, you know, around our neighborhood 24/7 like we are. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. So I, I guess I have mixed feelings about it. I think that in, the idea of the app is great. I think it makes a lot of things easy. I've had some good and bad experiences. I've had some good and bad experiences. I've gotten stuff taken care of. As Liz just mentioned, some of the graffiti and some of the other items have been taken care of. However, some things have not received any response or anything about it. So I think that, you know, the idea is great. Maybe a little lacking in the execution portion of it. But it's a two-way street. As Liz just mentioned, right, it requires the residents to also report it so that that gets done. So it's definitely better than the previous app. I think that this is great, and obviously, there's always room for improvement. So I would just say that, just a little more on the execution side, maybe some follow-up. I don't know if there's a process by which departments follow up on that, but it'd be great to get some responses to some, at least acknowledge, hey, we received it. We're going to dispatch someone or something's going to get done. But overall, I think that it's a step in the right direction. And I would like to echo, actually, the first speaker's option. If something can be added there to where you can request a meeting or some sort of contact to one of the council members or even the department heads, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else? Can I close the audience? Do we have any comments or any emails on this item?
We have one email, Mayor.
Go ahead.
We have Jimmy Osayta wrote to express concerns about the effectiveness of the Go Southgate app, which allows residents to submit requests regarding the neighborhood issues. He asked several questions about who monitors the requests, how they are managed, and the effectiveness of the app. He requests basic data such as the number of requests submitted, average response time, completion rates, and how long the pending requests remain unresolved. He shares his own negative experience where multiple safety-related requests were not completed and tickets were deleted when followed up. He urges the city to ensure timely response to requests and ask for contact information of staff responsible for managing them to facilitate direct communication. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Council, do you have any further comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, yeah, some other comments that speakers brought up were actually something I wanted to bring up as well. I'm wondering if there's any way that we can get reports on how many reports are out there and how staff address them, because I also hear that they reported something, I get an email, I'll give a phone call, and that what they reported wasn't addressed. So it's great to have an app. I've used it quite a few times to report graffiti and, you know, other things like illegally dumped furniture. And, you know, I see it getting taken care of, bless you, but not everybody is seeing that. And there was, I'm going to give you an example, and I think I talked to you about this once before, Rob. I took a photo of graffiti on a wall. And I sent it through the app. What I found interesting is that the day after, actually, two days later, I did see that the graffiti was gone. But there was also illegally dumped furniture. So I got the message saying the graffiti got removed, but the furniture that was also in the photo was still there. So again, I could have, you know, I would have thought that when the graffiti was taken out, somebody would have said, hey, there's also furniture out here. We got to take care of that as well. So again, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback from that from time to time, just, and I think my colleagues would like to see that also. Because there's quite a few people that are complaining about reporting something and not being addressed. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, and it's something that Matt from UWS talked about, is that there's a lot of illegally dumped furniture on county property or Union Pacific Railroad property. And we don't have authority, and UWS does not have authority to go in there because it's not city property. So again, I wish we could inform our community a little bit better so that they understand. I see it a lot. I coach girls softball here at Southgate High, and there's the railroad tracks right behind. And there's, if you go by there, you're going to see it. It looks like somebody's trying to move in. One day, there's a sofa, next there's a refrigerator, next there's a TV. And, you know, it's just being dumped there. But our staff and UWS can't go in there because it's Union Pacific Railroad property, and they don't allow us to go in there. So I wish we can do a little bit better reaching out to our county reps and Union Pacific Railroad to get some permission or at least get them to go in and clean it up. Those are the only comments I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just, if I can get a little bit of clarification, if the resident submits the claim anonymously, do they get a comment back? Or, because I'm not sure if it requires them to put an email. I just created an account, so it has my email address. So I get the responses when I initiate the response, the request. I get an immediate response back to my email saying, we received it and we got it. If they're anonymous, do they have to submit an email address? I don't know.
Well, the way the system works is if you submit a request, you're going to get a response, but you need to include an email or something to get that response. So if they're submitting anonymous and not including an email address or something, they won't be able to be contacted. Is that, is that right?
Is it?
Do you want to clarify that?
Is it a requirement, even if you're filing anonymously, to put in an email address?
I'd have to go check to see if the system mandates you to provide an email address. Anonymous is more, you don't leave your name.
Right.
So it just becomes anonymous.
Yeah.
I'd have to check to see if it's actually requiring the users to provide an email address.
Okay. Because I think that may be some of the issue, right, is if you file it that way, then you're not getting the full effect of the app, right? You're not getting the response back telling you, hey, we've got it. And you're not getting the follow-ups that come up after that. So if we can follow up with that and maybe, you know, include that in some of our paperwork that we issue out, saying, hey, if you want up-to-date notifications, create the account so that way, when you submit your requests, you'll be notified on every step of the way. Because I have never had a problem of it, but I, again, I've never filed anonymously. So I just want to see if we can check that.
I was actually trying to see if I could do it on my app, but service is kind of bad in here, but we can look into it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So being, no more comments from Council. This is our receiving file item. Okay. Do we need a motion to receive a file? Can I get a second? Motion second, roll call, please. Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed. Okay. Before we move on to item number two, I had a request from our councilmembers, Avalos, that she's leaving at 8 o'clock tonight. And she wants Consent Calendar to move up. So can you please read Consent Calendar?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think there are, there may be a number of residents here at City Hall tonight wanting to talk about item number three.
Okay.
And my sense is that item number three may take a while, but I think it's important to, if I may, suggest that the members of the audience be advised that there's a request to continue that public hearing tonight, from tonight's meeting to the 25th. The applicant is not here, and this is a administrative hearing, and they need to be present. And so our practice at the City of Southgate is that if people have come to a public hearing that is continued, they can still come and speak, and we will listen to their comments. But the council, if it agrees to continue it, will not be responding to any of those comments this evening. If those individuals also, if they want to leave tonight, they can, they still would have the opportunity, if this matters continue, I believe it should be, to, they can comment on the 25th. I just, I know that we have some people outside in the audience, and I thought it would be important to let the public know what the request is. It will require the council approval. But I know that the applicant had requested a continuance, and it's been our practice here at the city, when there's a request by the applicant, that we typically grant those. So in order to give the public a sense of where we're going tonight, again, if the, when the item gets called up, the request is to continue the hearing, we will still allow the public to comment. But because it won't start the actual, those comments will be part of the hearing, but the council will not be able to comment on those hearings because the applicant hasn't made a presentation. And we have to protect the record because this is a formal hearing, a formal administrative hearing. So if you have any questions on that, Madam Mayor, but I think I, it's important to alert the public.
Clear on that. So you're going to have the opportunity, I mean, if you wish, you have the opportunity to speak on item three. We are not going to be taking action. This is going to be moved to the 25th. So, but you still have your opportunity to speak on it.
Hold them down.
Okay. Okay, so, and you're going to have, let me go ahead and open it to the audience. I mean, we're going to go ahead and call. We're going to call the public hearing. Okay.
Are you, Madam Mayor?
Hold on, hold on.
Are you calling the consent calendar or item three?
I was going to call the council, I mean, the.
Call item three?
I'm going to call item, it's not in consent.
No, item three.
It's item three.
It's item three.
Okay, hold on a second. I was going to follow the request that Councilwoman Avalos asked for, which it was move, move the consent first, and then we come back.
Well.
Because she has to leave at 8 o'clock.
Okay. But. But I think a lot of people have, Mayor, I think a lot of people are here too, that they want to hear.
Yes, thank you. So we're going to go ahead and do consent. This is a very, this is, please. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead, we're going to give you the opportunity to speak. We're going to go ahead and do consent. And that, it's only three items, and then we're coming back. As soon as we finish consent, we're coming back to item number three. Okay? All right, thank you. Can you please, no, can you please read?
I'm disappointed.
Okay, can you please?
People are here. They want to, they want to be heard.
They're busy people. They work hard.
Excuse me.
Yeah. People, they want to be heard. They want to be heard. This is to be represented.
It's just. Excuse me, Madam.
Thank you, thank you. And I, we cannot be going, we cannot going back and forward, and I would like to.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, if I may, if I just may, sir.
No, no, you can't.
You will have, you will have an opportunity to speak.
When?
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, we're not, we're not going to talk about that item. Can you please? The city attorney, can you please, thank you.
Madam, excuse me, excuse me. Let us just finish this, and when we get to your item, just be respectful of the process, please. We will already, no, no. You're not recognized, Madam Mayor, you're not recognized. Just one second. Just one second, please. Just one second. You will be, right now, you're not at the mic. Just please wait.
The only thing is that we're doing, we're holding up the meeting, and we could get this done as soon as possible so we can continue with the meeting. So we're not, we are not going to allow you to.
City clerk, just. No, just one second, just one second, sir. Just one second, sir. Excuse me. Just one second. City clerk, please call the item. The consent item, please.
Consent calendar items, agenda items five, six, and seven are consent calendar items. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, does anyone have any comments on item five, six, and seven?
You got me rattled here, Mayor. Hang on, hang on, this is, okay, appropriate, updated, qualified employee, oh, no, not that. Waste water, oh, okay, all right. Okay, so regarding item seven. So I went down the list for this omnibus mutual assistance agreement. So this is, this is a smart move, but my concern is with item seven is I noticed on the list, Altadena is on there, and it's listed three times. So my, the thing that I want to stress to the council is, get ahold of this organization, this Cal-Warn group, and ask them, what did they do for Altadena when they had those, you know, that horrendous, was it Eaton Fire that destroyed, you know, that whole city? How did, how were they of assistance to them during that disaster? They're listed three times on that chart that has all the cities that they service, and I would like to know, you know, what type of service did they do for Altadena? Because Altadena is a charred ruin now. So that's my concern. What exactly did they do to help Altadena during their hour of need? And then for six, well, hang on, what was, six, okay, so I'm not happy with item six because you're appropriating $176,000 from general funds to pay a parking lot. So you have no problem taking our general fund money to, you know, to do an upgrade on this parking lot, but I want to tie this to item two. But meanwhile, for item two, you don't want, you don't want to give the people the thing that they want that they've been pushing for all year long. And you just want to spend, you have no problem funding the hell out of this item with general fund money. Meanwhile, with item two, $12,180. $12,180.
Part of this.
Okay, it's part of this.
$12,180 is, now, oh, it's a problem. How are we going to fund that? Meanwhile, you're spending general fund money for item six, which is the parking lot. So I'm not happy with that at all. And Mayor, I'm begging you, please, if she's gone, I'm begging you to push item two to the next meeting, because I need all five.
Yeah.
I can't let this die on a two-two tie. I'm begging you. You've got to push it through to the next meeting, please.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Okay, anyone else on item five, six, and seven? If not, we're going to close the audience section. And do we have any emails?
We have no emails, Mayor.
No emails.
No emails? Okay. What's the wish of Council?
So moved.
Second.
Five, six, and seven.
Okay, motion, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes, but I will abstain on item number six due to that I live 500, within 500 feet of this of this place here. So I'm not going to be voting, and I haven't been voting on this item.
You're recusing yourself?
I'm recusing myself.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay.
Okay, we, now, we are moving up item number three. Can you please read it to the record?
I'm sorry?
It's a public, we are opening the public hearing.
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning code amendment to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 11.21 land use types of Title 11 zoning of the Southgate Municipal Code to allow restaurant uses and alcohol sales within the open spaces zoning district. B, approving a conditional use permit to allow the sales of alcohol, license type 41, beer and wine for an onsite consumption in conjunction with existing restaurant cafe located within the soccer facility at 959 Pinehurst Avenue, the So5 Soccer Complex. And C, continue the public hearing to the regularly scheduled City Council meeting of February 25, 2025. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Again, we will hear all of you, you know, to both of you to say whatever you want on this item, but as council, we are not taking any action tonight. It will be moved to February 25. So anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Madam Mayor, just so that the community is clear, again, we're moving the meeting not because this council is asking for it, but because the applicant has asked for that professional courtesy for it to be moved on the 25th of February. I just want, again, we're being professionally mindful. we're being professionally mindful of the applicant, and we are here to hear your concerns. Thank you.
Okay, uh, you're gonna have your time to speak. You're gonna get three minutes, so, um, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council. I do believe all you value your time.
Can you please state your name so we can know who we're talking to?
Jose Antonio Gutierrez. I believe each and one of you value your time. Now, if the person, the applicant, knew that they were not gonna make this meeting, why did the council and/or city staff not inform we, the audience, we, the residents, that this was not gonna be heard this evening? It is appalling that we have to come here now for the fourth month because this has been scheduled since the month of November, and we continue to have this second-rate conduct by your behalf to the residents when we are against this application. If this person that's applying could not make it to this meeting, then why don't we default and say, you strike out? Time to go. In all honesty, in all honesty, if you don't value your residents, your community, or you value them more than you value us, let us know because we have no problem the next time your name is on the ballot to say, screw you! We, just like you came around to my home and to the home of all these people, soliciting our vote for you, if and when, on the 25th, if you do allow to have a vote come through, we're gonna remember your name and how you voted. Because it's appalling that we now appear today on this day of February, and this is now the fourth month. This keeps getting pushed back, holidays or not. Consider our time as well. If you consider the applicant's time, it's time to look at us and say, you know what? You're more valuable to us than the applicant.
Good evening. Caroline, Caroline Manavia. I'm the one who appealed this decision before you, and not single-handedly, but with many of the people here gathered together to oppose this because it is an appalling thing that has occurred to our city, that was allowed to occur to our city. I was here the night of your inauguration, where you all prayed, and you took an oath. And I hope that you uphold that prayer and that oath, and that you do something for our community. Now, we all know the facts. It's illegal to sell alcohol near church and a school, and both are present on Pinehurst Avenue. Our community is a majority Hispanic and a blue-collar, working-class community. And we already struggle with alcohol. We already struggle with illegal substances, and a decision like this would have never been passed or made had we been a white, Caucasian, or Asian community. The fact that you have even entertained this idea of selling alcohol is a mind-boggling, is mind-boggling to me. And that you continue to entertain this idea. Not only did you entertain it, you allowed it. You have unleashed an unnecessary and an innumerable amount of dire and deadly consequences because there would be, there will be dire and deadly consequences. Let's all be aware of this. We're not children, we're adults. We all know the consequences of unleashing this upon our community. Now, we are pleading with you, all of us, are pleading with you as our city council to represent us, to do your part, what is meant to be done, and leave our park for recreation, for play, for family. Keep our 96.8 acres pure. This is what we're asking you to do. Do what is right and say no to the rezoning to all Southgate Parks. Do what is right and say no to the sale of alcohol at SoFi Center. Now, we've all know that Southgate Parks was once a beacon of light and hope for our community. It's not anymore. We know this. We know that our park is, especially Pinehurst. Um, you guys have deforested it. You cut down all those trees on that block. You have feral cats that are rampant on there that there's species, either human or animal, covered and littered on that path. Now, throughout our park, you have cut down several trees in order to make a walking path that is always muddied and frequently unusable. You have boarded up multiple slides on the, in the playgrounds that are not allowed to be used for over a year? Our park is rampant with homelessness. Our park is rampant with drugs and alcohol and illegal gambling that you are very well aware of. So shame on you! Shame on all of you because you took an oath the day of your inauguration. Shame upon you for allowing this and approving of this beforehand. And it is your right and your duty to serve your community, and that is what we're asking of you. Thank you and good night.
I need a translator?
I'm right here.
Yes, it's right there.
Okay. Si, por favor. Okay, Martha Maravilla. Este, um, yo quería nada más agregar a lo que dijo mi hija.
I would like to add to what my daughter just said.
Que, um, me di cuenta que ustedes oraron al principio de la reunión de este día.
I noticed that you said an invocation at the beginning of this meeting tonight?
Ustedes se refirieron a las cosas de Dios que los bendijera y todo eso.
You made reference to what God's will was?
Pero dónde está Dios en todo esto?
But where's God in all this?
Ustedes no representan nada de Dios.
You don't represent anything about God?
Es una porquería, queriendo poner alcohol ahí. Ustedes saben que ya hay marihuana, que hay este...
This is dreadful, you know that there's marijuana there?
Jugadas ilegales en las esquinas, muchos homeless.
There's, uh...
Es, es, es un desastre el parque ahorita.
Right now, parks are a disaster.
Hay mucha droga por ahí.
There's a lot of drugs.
Y ustedes van a permitir alcohol enfrente.
And now you're gonna allow alcohol?
Porque ustedes ya están de acuerdo con esas gentes de que ya les, no sé qué diablos han hecho con ellos.
Because now you're in agreeance with these people?
Ustedes tienen que representar a la comunidad.
You have to represent the community.
Si fuéramos una comunidad de gente blanca, ustedes no estarían aquí sentados ahora.
If we were a white community, this would not be happening.
Y tienen que representar a su gente que los ha elegido.
And you have to represent your people that have elected you.
Yo soy franca, yo no los he elegido ninguno de ustedes porque nunca me han usado, porque tienen algo crúpulo.
I didn't choose any of you.
Todos los latinos tenemos algo crúpulo cuando estamos en el poder.
All of us Latinos have something crooked when we're in power.
Y no está bien que ustedes permitan esto porque si ustedes lo permiten, nos vamos a ir más adelante.
Because there will be no consequences. You're, you're unnoticed.
Eso es todo.
That's it.
Gracias.
Madam Mayor, my name is Francisco Gallegos. I came here last month with three concerns, and this is one of them. The chief of police told us last month that there was eight police officers vacancies in our department. He also said that our city has outgrown our police department. And now we are seriously contemplating, considering the sale of alcohol. So let me tell you, I've lived in Southgate for 50 years. I've seen the, the, and the sad part is that I grew up with Chief, Chief Todd. You know, I, I know him. The safes were, the streets back then were much safer in Southgate. If you allow this, this is what will happen. I stopped going to Southgate Park to exercise so my health and the health of a lot of our senior citizens are affected by this because we can't use the Southgate Park anymore. There's cannabis use everywhere. There's, right now, this is happening. There's illegal gambling, everything. And to top it off, we're going to, you know, add alcohol use. Let me tell you, before you even think of doing such a crazy thing, we not only need to fill the eight vacant police officer positions, but we need to probably increase them. I can't move out of this city. My house is paid for. I love this city. I don't wanna give up on it. And it hurts my heart to see this happening because I, it seems like I can't stop it. The only good thing today is that I see more people here today, and then I hope and beg and plead that you guys listen to us and turn this vote around before it's too late. You help the chief enforce his police department. We're going to need it. It's already really bad out there. We don't need this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Eddie Rivas. I'm, I live on Orange. I'm also a business owner. I just started my business this year here in Southgate. So I've been here since '91. And I just wanted to say, I have two little kids. I have my wife as well. And the proximity to our home is actually quite close. So the probability of something happening in this area closer, obviously, is higher than in different parts of the city. I did wanna mention that something that I do see on Facebook groups is, you know, the city's going downhill because of Raza. I hate that. I hate hearing that. I do think there's a lot of good in our community. And I think that I'm a God-fearing person, and so I go to church. And so I feel like church is a very important part of my life that I wanna continue to keep clean. And after that is our parks. I think the parks are very important in my life. I'm not sure if it's important. It seems like it's important to a lot of us. So to have something that can lead to something terrible, I feel like we should not have that there. I take care of my kids, and I instruct them in so many ways to be good citizens of this life and to bring benefit to other people, a good benefit to other people. And I hate to imagine that a drunk driver hits one of my kids. It's just unfathomable. And the fact that it's gonna be close to my house is crazy to me. I sometimes at night avoid going to other cities, such as Downey or other cities, where now they, they have this, like, party culture with my family because I do not wanna put them in jeopardy. I rather drive alone. And I don't wanna feel that way in my city. I don't wanna know that I'm gonna drive and potentially have a higher probability that I'm not okay with here in my city. So I, I just hope that you guys make a good decision in, in, in keeping that kind of conception away from the Southgate Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ms. Mayor Maria Davila and council members, vice mayor. My name is Angelica Martinez, 10129 Orange Avenue. And my concern of today and for a few, several weeks and months has been the security, the safety of my, of the community members. And now that I've been noticing that we're having this, the, the sale of the alcohol at the SoFi Soccer Games Restaurant, I believe that there's exposure to the, to our community, to our residents, to our kids. And I believe that you are, you have the power to, to do something about it. I believe that it's a lack of respect of the persons who are opening this restaurant. He, they are avoiding us. I believe that they know that the community was gonna be here with the support, and they, they avoid us. I believe it's a tragedy they're doing it. But I, as, I believe in family. I have been a resident of 41 years in this city since I got married. My kids have been raised here in our community. And now I have three of my grandkids that are starting to be raised. And I have one of my, my grandkids that attends to, to the elementary. And I, it's a big risk for our community to be selling drugs when there's a sports center to be entertained and doing something right. How can it be? I, I think it's a good idea to have the, the restaurant and sell all those goodies that they're offering. We have another option here to be in our community, but I think that is not the right thing to be selling. I oppose totally us, everybody here. And with all your respect, I think that it's in your hands to do the decision, the right decision to be here and not be in other communities, to be here and involved for the good to, to educate our kids. Thank you so much.
Hello. Thank you, members of city council. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Isabella Ladan. I actually wrote something down because this is really, really important to me. I can remember playing at Southgate Park myself when I was a kid. And now I have two children that practically now, Southgate Park has become a second home to me. My kids have sports events there, scouting events there. They have many events that we've even done kindergarten, the kindergarten programs that they have there. So this is a big issue for me. I do stand here before to express deep concerns about this proposal to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages at our public park, the SoFi Soccer Complex. While this may seem like an attempt to provide a convenience or boost to the park's offerings, the reality is far more troubling. Allowing alcohol to be sold in a venue that already serves as a hub for competitive sports, particularly involving our children, presents serious risks. We are putting our families in dangerous situations where already emotional and competitive parents could be influenced by alcohol to act recklessly, potentially resulting in violent or unsafe behavior. We've seen it happen in other areas. And we do not need to bring it to our community. The atmosphere of a youth sports event should be one of support, teamwork, and good sportsmanship, not the potential for alcohol-induced confrontations. What concerns me further is the driving force behind this proposal. This is not a move born from a genuine desire to enhance the experience for families or ensure public safety. This is a move to increase city revenue, and it's being sold under the guise of better amenities. Our council members should be looking out for the well-being of our community, not prioritizing profits over public safety. We can do better than this. Let's focus on providing an environment where families can feel safe, children can enjoy their sports, and parents can support their kids their sports, and parents can support their kids without fear of the volatility of alcohol brings. I urge you to reconsider this plan and protect the values that make our community a place where families come first. So I do please hope that when this does come to a vote, that you, I mean, that this issue never, I mean, this issue should have never happened, but, you know, that this is resolved, that you understand that this community does not want alcohol, whether in this park or any, any other parks in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Anna Rosas, and I am a resident of Southgate for heading twenty years.
Yeah, hi. Good evening. My name is Fernando Rivera. And, yeah, we had lived in the city of Southgate for the past thirty years. And we're here just to express our concerns on this alcohol situation. And I know you guys are not gonna make a decision tonight. And it's so unfortunate for that, because, you know, everybody's here expecting for, to have a result, you know, tonight. But I just want you guys to take home and sleep on it, and think about, if you guys really know what the difference between a recreational park and a bar and a club. You know what I mean? Because those are two different things. So now, it's like, I don't know why every single one of you guys would entertain the idea that alcohol will be a great idea to sell in our park, right next to like, maybe like ten feet away from elementary school. I really don't understand, and I'm in shock. You know, so what I want you guys to take away from this is to go home tonight and think about, you know, what are we doing? What are we doing to our community? What are we doing to our kids, to our children? That place, it was done for a healthy lifestyle. You know, for kids to go to have a place where they could call a safe haven. You know what I mean? So I don't know if you guys do research, anything about alcohol consumption among young adults? And the numbers are really, really high. So we really don't need to add, we really don't want to give it to them, you know, for grabs. Because we'll guarantee every single one of you guys here tonight that only twenty-one years and over are gonna be consuming that alcohol there. You know, it's ridiculous. You know what I mean? So, you know, I really hope you guys do the right thing. You know, go home, sleep on it, and I hope you guys don't even consider of even approving that permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And all we're asking is just for you to be supportive, and I'm hoping you guys are not up for it and approving it as our council members, because we choose you to represent our community, to represent all of us. And I'm hoping you make the right decision. This was something that I just recently found out. I was in shock, honestly. It was not transparent. When I went to the City Hall page on the Parks and Recreation, I did not see the agenda for what we're gonna cover today. So for me, it has to be transparent. Now I'm finding out that this is gonna start tomorrow. Starting as of tomorrow, they're gonna start selling, and there's flyers, there's a flyer saying that starting tomorrow, they're gonna start selling wine and beer. So I'm, like, honestly, I'm so in shock, because this is my community, and, you know, this is our children, where they're being raised, and it has to be a healthy, beautiful community. And the park has to be a safe environment.
Okay.
Bro, bro.
Thank you. I mean, yes, I mean...
Can you, can you, maybe, or if the city manager would like to just clarify what's happening tomorrow there at SoFi? Because I, I don't think that, because I received a flyer, and it didn't say they were selling alcohol. It said that they were having a community meeting to discuss what their plans were.
That is correct.
Next, next person, please.
So you're saying that tomorrow, there's a community event? So that's something, are you gonna post it on City Hall so we could be there and represent that this is not right?
Let us explain that. Let us explain. Let me go ahead and explain it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I know that, because we received, again, we received an invitation, because there is a community meeting tomorrow from five to seven, but it's open to the public. It's open to the public.
Okay. Then we'll be there as well.
There, there will be no alcohol sale unless, unless the body here approves it. If it doesn't get approved, they will never sell alcohol. But it has to be approved by the council first. Okay? So tonight, there is no action.
Which I'm hoping all of you guys support.
No, no, no.
And consideration.
Yes. Uh, city manager?
So just to clarify, to help everyone understand, so that event is not the city's, not our staff, not the council, that's the SoFi group putting that on? And we've just, they've sent out, you know, flyers to some people, I don't know where they've sent it, that's up to them. However, there is an error in their pamphlet, and we took a look at it just now, and they do put on there, which is incorrect, a selection of beer and wine available, because that's not, that's not permitted. They don't have, so, just clear. But again, but just again, that's them, not us. Okay?
It was in there?
So they actually had a bullet point on there.
I brought this, and also would have not known. But I did saw that part. That's why I was addressing it to you.
So we're clarifying there will be none. There won't be any soul.
Not gonna happen. Next person, next person in line, please.
Mi nombre es Kathy Mesa. Si me da tiempo, por favor, para traducirle. My name is Kathy Mesa. Good evening. Es como la quinta o sexta vez que vengo aquí.
This is like the fifth or sixth time that I've been here.
Y las veces anteriores siempre he sido ignorada.
Last times have been ignored.
Espero que esta sea la excepción.
I hope this is the exception.
Maria Dávila, usted mencionó a un grupo de nuestra comunidad que usted era empleada de la comunidad.
Maria Dávila, you mentioned that one of our community members, that you were...
For the community, yeah. So hasta ahorita no lo he visto porque siempre han decidido por nosotros.
I have not seen that yet, because you've all decided for us?
Parece que están en contra de nosotros y no con nosotros.
It seems that you're against us and not with us.
So si ustedes cinco no están listos para escuchar a la comunidad?
So if all you five are not ready to listen to your community?
Déjenle la silla a alguien que le importe la comunidad.
Leave the seat to someone that does care about the community.
No deben que ser egoístas y tener a la comunidad siempre yendo hacia abajo. Denle la oportunidad a alguien más.
Don't be selfish and don't let the community going downwards.
Tienen años y no hacen nada.
You've been there for many years and you don't do anything?
Es bien sabido que un parque es un lugar de recreación, no de destrucción.
It is known that a park is there for recreation, not for destruction?
Tienen que invertir en la juventud, no tratar de envenenarlos.
You have to invest in the youth, not poison them.
Cuando están buscando los votos, no van a pedirle a los negocios que voten por ustedes.
When you're looking for votes, you don't go to businesses to ask for votes.
Porque ni siquiera viven en la comunidad.
Because they don't even live in this community.
Entonces, el manager de la ciudad no vive en Southgate, ¿le gustaría un negocio de alcohol en su, en su ciudad?
The city manager does not live in this community. Would he like this kind of business in his community?
Tienen que pensar más en la comunidad latina y de bajos recursos que ustedes representan.
You have to think more of this community and those who you represent.
Especialmente ahorita tenemos suficientes problemas que está pasando con la migración.
Especially all the problems that we're going through with immigration issues?
Como para que estén destruyendo más nuestra comunidad latina.
On top of that, for you to be destroying our community, Hispanic community.
Es tiempo que escuchen a su comunidad. Estamos aquí para que nos escuchen.
It's time for you to listen to us. We are here for you to listen to us.
Y cada que están en campaña, recuerden lo que nos prometen.
Every time you're campaigning, remember what you promised.
Porque hasta ahorita no han cumplido nada.
Because you haven't come through yet.
Y están más preocupados en otras cosas que estar dando permisos de alcohol en cada esquina.
And you should be worrying about other things other than giving permits for sales of alcohol.
No se le olvide, Maria Dávila, cuando estuvo apoyando para traer escuelas a Southgate.
I don't forget, Maria Dávila, when you were supporting bringing schools to Southgate.
So ahora quieres poner un lugar de alcohol enfrente de la escuela que tú trajistes a la comunidad.
Now you wanna sell alcohol in the, in front of the school that you brought in.
Pilar, usted trabaja como maestra. ¿Es el ejemplo que usted quiere en un lugar recreativo para los jóvenes?
Pilar, you're also one that educates kids. Is this what you want for the kids that you're educating?
Igual, Gil Hurtado, usted trabaja con los jóvenes, ha sido entrenador, está siempre con los equipos que están en la comunidad.
Gil Hurtado is a coach. You two are always with kids in the community.
¿Eso quiere que los jóvenes crezcan viendo que el alcohol es normal?
Is this what you want for the kids, that to see alcohol sales be normal?
Si toda esta gente no los hace recapacitar, no sé qué quieren.
If all of these people don't make you consider this, I don't know what else.
Y, y es tiempo, es tiempo de que paren de jugar con nuestro tiempo. Nuestro tiempo vale, tenemos familias.
It's time for you to stop playing around with our time. We have families too.
Mientras que los que pidieron el permiso están bien a gusto en su casa.
And the applicant is very comfortable at home.
Porque para ustedes todo se trata de dinero. Tienen que ver el bienestar de su comunidad.
For all of you, it's all about revenue, but you have to see what is the benefit for your community.
Los residentes tuvieron que pagar más de dos mil dólares para que este se trajera otra vez a la agenda, para apelar.
The residents had to pay over two thousand dollars for this agenda item to be placed back on the agenda?
Ustedes creen que como comunidad latina y trabajadora, ¿les sobra ese dinero para dárselos?
Do you think that we are in excess of that kind of money to give it to you?
Esto es una vergüenza. Entonces, si no están listos, dejen esa silla.
This is a shame.
Mi nombre es Claudia.
Good evening. My name is Claudia.
Vivo aquí en Southgate desde hace veinticuatro años.
I've been living here in Southgate since twenty-four years ago.
Y yo creo que ya está más que dicho que no queremos alcohol en la comunidad.
I think you've heard enough that we don't want sales of alcohol in our community?
Uh, no sé si alguien haya dicho, pero para mí, Southgate, el parque de Southgate es el corazón de la ciudad.
I don't know if anyone said this, but for me, Southgate Park is the heart of the community.
Es uno de los parques más grandes que yo conozco.
It's one of the largest parks I have known.
Y que todas las ciudades de alrededor vienen con sus familias a este parque.
And a lot of people from surrounding cities come to this Southgate Park.
Porque hay mucho que hacer aquí.
Because there's a lot of activities to do here.
Uh, hay un dicho que dice, mente sana, cuerpo sano, fomenta el deporte.
There's a saying that says...
El alcohol no está en esta ecuación, no tiene nada que ver.
There's a saying that says, healthy minds brings healthy bodies, but alcohol sales has nothing to do with that.
Como ya habían dicho, la señora Pilar, el señor Alrío son maestros, ellos fomentan...
As they had said, Pilar is an educator and Gil is a coach for kids.
Su trabajo principal es fomentar a las nuevas generaciones para ser mejores.
Your principal job is to focus on educating kids for betterment.
Usted, María, como habían dicho, usted es una ferviente persona que siempre ha trabajado por los niños, para las escuelas.
You, María, have always pursued, pursued the kids in education.
Usted, Barrón, es una persona joven, que tiene hijos, hijos pequeños.
You, Barrón, you are a young person with also kids.
No creo que quiera que sus hijos crezcan con todos estos problemas.
I don't think that you want your kids to be brought up with all these issues.
A usted, casi no lo conozco.
I don't know you very much.
Okay, pero ya, ya batallamos con muchos problemas internos en el parque.
But we've been dealing with a lot of internal problems in the park.
Y queremos cambios.
And we want change.
Si están sentados en esa silla...
If you're sitting in those seats...
Es porque nosotros los pusimos.
Because we put you there.
Para nosotros.
For us.
No, yo, todas las personas que traen negocios a la ciudad...
All the people that bring businesses into the city...
Son personas que no viven aquí.
Are people that don't live here.
Entonces, ustedes no deben creer por ellos, tienen que ver por nosotros.
You should not be looking, prioritizing them. You should be prioritizing us.
Muchas de las personas que están sentadas aquí enfrente, ni siquiera viven aquí.
A lot of people that are sitting here in front of us are not even living here.
Con todo respeto, sus opiniones no nos interesan.
With all due respect, your opinions are not really our concern.
Por favor, ya hagan algo por la comunidad.
Please do something for your community. We're tired.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Voy a hablar en español. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Raúl Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Raúl Cruz.
Todo lo que han dicho mis últimos compañeros respaldo sus palabras.
Everyone that has spoken before me, I support all of their words.
Y estoy aquí porque quiero que el parque de nuestra ciudad esté limpia de adicciones.
And I am here tonight because like them, I want our park to be free of all addictions.
Que destaque por su seguridad.
That it, it's standing for its safety.
Que sea un parque ejemplar donde las convivencias sean completamente libres de alcohol.
That it's a park that succeeds in everything and free of alcohol.
Exponer a un niño o niña a esas conductas, pensará que es normal.
If you expose children to that kind of conduct, they will grow thinking that that's normal.
Ahora está en nuestras manos promover una salud mental.
It's in our hands to promote a healthy mind.
Mejor para nuestros hijos.
Better for our kids.
Deseo que se abran más clubs de deporte en lugar de espacios donde se beneficie algunos cuentos.
I wish that more and better sports centers will be opening instead of areas like this.
Algunos cuentos. Hemos confiado en ustedes y deseo que tomen la mejor decisión.
We've trusted all of you, and I hope that you all make the right decision tonight.
Con todo respeto, muchas gracias.
With all due respect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julia Ponse, and I've been a long-term resident of Southgate. I actually know some of you from high school and some from my personal life way back in the day. I am here today as a parent, and I think my theme for my three minutes is going to be accountability. So you are accountable to us as the residents, and I want to know what you're going to do to hold the applicant accountable to showing up next time. I was shocked to hear that this has been happening since November. And then at the same time, I'm also grateful that they're not here, because now I'm going to ask more people to come and show up. I'm going to educate my people, let them know what is about to happen. I'm actually quite surprised that you would even entertain this idea. I'm baffled that we would allow alcohol where children go and practice. My kids go there to soccer practice. How awkward and unacceptable. So I'm asking you, what are you gonna do to hold the applicant accountable to showing up next time? No, I'm not looking for nods, I'm asking genuinely.
We can't go back and forward, sorry, we can't respond.
Oh, that's how that works, okay. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Then we're just gonna have to keep showing up, we're gonna have to ask more people to come. Tenemos que decirle a más gente que venga. Esta es una oportunidad para traer a más gente. So, we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Good evening again. Lisette Ruiz. I'm a Parks Commissioner, thanks to Joshua, and I'm also Planning Commissioner, thanks to Maria Dávila. I was one of the votes, excuse me, I was one of the votes against this proposed project, and I stand by my decision more than ever, seeing the concerns of the local community. I've attended Southgate Park since I was a little kid. I grew up in neighboring Huntington Park, and my grandfather would bring me here very often. And I've played adult softball, and I've seen firsthand how easy it is for people to get away with drinking during the games. I've also volunteered on weekends doing cat trap neuter return. And I've actually, you know, helped neuter a bunch of the cats on Pinehurst. And during those trappings, I've seen people just drink out of their cars in the parking lot, and it's unacceptable. I live two blocks away from the park, and, you know, I go, I attend with my baby there a lot, and it's concerning to see how much drug use, how much alcohol there is already. During the presentation that we were provided at the planning commission, I did come with an open mind. Personally, I believe people should, you know, have the choice to control their alcohol however they please, be it, you know, within legal limitations. I was, however, very disappointed to see that the way they presented the security issue was very misleading, in my opinion. The paperwork kinda had that they were gonna have security being offered at the premises, at the parking lot. The thing that they didn't really clarify until somebody in the audience questioned the issue was that these people weren't gonna be security all the time. They were only gonna have like a part-time security. So there wasn't gonna be a person going through the parking lot making sure that people aren't drinking. And that's how they were trying to sell it to us, right? That alcohol was gonna be less used because they were gonna have security, and now people aren't gonna be drinking in their cars, because, you know, there's gonna be security, you know, telling them not to drink in their cars. But these securities aren't gonna be there the whole time. So that's not acceptable. And then come to learn that this, these things that they're providing the second time around that they've applied are less stringent than when the first time they applied and they were turned down. So what's up with that? Why are they coming with weaker, with less things to give us? And we're supposed to just let them, you know, come through and do whatever they want? Like, that's unacceptable to me. So I voted no because of that, because I saw that in their plan where they were gonna be able to let people drink, there was gonna be an event room? And how are they gonna make sure that youth don't drink? You know, it's, to me, it's easy to ask an adult, like, hey, let me have a sip of your beer. They're not gonna have security there. So that's alarming. I've taken my nieces and nephews there, and I wouldn't feel comfortable having them there without me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Gabriel, no, perdón, perdón. Buenas noches, concejales de la ciudad de Southgate. Yo conozco perfectamente al señor Alrios, Gil Hurtado, Maria Dávila, y Pilar. Yo llevo cincuenta y cuatro años viviendo aquí en la ciudad de Southgate.
Me da pausa, señor, para traducirle, por favor.
Claro que sí.
Okay. I've been living here in Southgate for over fifty-four years. I know each one of you.
Yeah. Y varias de las personas aquí de Southgate han estado tocando mis puertas para apoyarlas a todos ustedes.
Many of you have been knocking at my doors for me to support you all.
Y yo las apoya a todos.
And I have supported you all.
Pero esta noticia me ha caído como un balde de agua fría en la cara.
These news have been very surprising to me, and it's like a pail of cold water in my face.
Ya que yo soy papá, abuelo, y bisabuelo.
Since I am a father, grandfather, and a great-grandfather.
Yo tengo señoritas, desde, bueno, una niña, mi nieta más chiquitita, dos años, hasta mi nieto, el mayor, treinta y cinco.
I have from two to thirty-five-year-olds as grandkids.
Todos han crecido en Southgate.
All of them raised here in Southgate.
Entonces, yo siento que esto no es, no es justo, no es aceptable.
In that unacceptable.
Nosotros necesitamos un parque seguro para nuestras comunidades.
For our community.
Entonces, yo les pido.
I ask you.
No les pido, les exijo.
No, I demand you.
No, I demand you.
De que no aprueben o si la, yo sé que el Departamento de Planificación ya tiene el permiso.
I know that you have not approved it, I know that it's there being considered.
Yo me opongo a que ese permiso se ya había acabado. Muchísimas gracias. Atentamente, señor Gabriel Guerrero, y aquí 54 años viviendo aquí en Southgate.
Living here in Southgate for 54 years.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Marine and I am a resident here of Southgate, living near Southgate Park. I believe that approving the sale of onsite consumption of alcohol is not in alignment with the city's vision of fostering a thriving, safe and inclusive community where everyone has access to exceptional services, education and support to lead resilient and vibrant lives. For the following reasons. One, alcohol consumption will limit access for minors to certain areas, making the park less inclusive and increasing risks of safety both at the soccer complex and the surrounding neighborhood. Two, intoxicated individuals could cause disruptions during youth sports events that happen daily, create unsafe situations or even commit crimes such as theft or harassment around the park or again at the complex. Three, the sale of alcohol may set a poor example, not may, it will set a poor example for youth, potentially encouraging unhealthy behaviors and increasing the risk of underage drinking. As we all know, Legacy High School is very close to Southgate Park and I think we can turn a blind eye that many students do obtain fake IDs that can eventually be used at this complex. Four, the presence of alcohol may compromise the safety of parkgoers, especially those walking around or exercising, and poses a risk to the children near the elementary school. While there may be restrictions on where alcohol can be consumed at the complex, there is no certainty that individuals will refrain from becoming intoxicated or acting in a manner that threatens the safety of others at the park or while traveling home. Given all these potential risks, very real risks and uncertainties associated with the sale and consumption of alcohol at the soccer complex, I urge the city council to really think about this and really consider what the people want. The safety and the well-being of our community should remain the highest priority. Our lives should be the highest priority and outweighs any potential revenue generated by the sale of alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Sí, buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Norma Díaz.
My name is Norma Díaz.
Y algunos que me conocen dirán que es aquí Norma, si viven en Cuandos Park.
And several of you may say, what is Norma doing here?
Pero estoy aquí porque yo acudo mucho al parque de Southgate, igual que mucha gente de mi comunidad.
I am here because I too support our Southgate Park like all of our community members.
El parque que tenemos más cercas es el de Huntington Park y está echado a perder ese parque.
In Huntington Park, the closest park we have is Huntington Park and it's all destroyed.
Para mí el parque de Southgate es un ejemplo, yo les pido que sigan teniendo ese parque como un buen ejemplo.
I ask you to please continue having this park, it's a very good example for our community and surrounding cities.
También al aprobar la venta de alcohol, no solo van a probar eso en su parque de Southgate.
If you approve sales of alcohol, you're not only approving that for the community of Southgate.
Va a ser un mal ejemplo para dar pie a que muchos parques hagan lo mismo.
It will also be an example for others to do the same.
Que a ratos lo van a hacer parques, van a ser bares.
And it will not be parks. Later on down the line, they would be bars.
Yo les pido que se toquen, que no se to, no dejen tocarse por el dinero.
I ask you not to be, not to allow yourselves to only think about revenue.
Dejen tocarse por el corazón de la gente que necesita esos parques.
Let your hearts be touched by the people that need those parks.
Porque al final, cuando vengan las elecciones, esa persona que le dieron el permiso ni siquiera sabe si van a votar por ustedes.
When reelections come, those peoples, those people that are asking for the permit will not be there supporting you.
Pero esta gente que está aquí, son las que pueden apoyarlos.
Will be supporting you.
Cuando ven que hacen ustedes un buen trabajo.
When you do a good job. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rigoberto Gonzalez. I live across the street from the park. I just wanna bring some info to this because anyone that lives on Tweedy, Southern, Pinehurst, Eldridge, accidents happen all the time. Drugs, alcohol, you name it. People are driving on people's lawns, okay? There's accidents, people are getting hit. We have people running through the park with knives chasing women, okay? All these things happen, right? And I've been living here all my life. I was a scorekeeper at Southgate Park. I saw drinking. It happens, right? Next to this SoFi, you have baseball, you have soccer, you have just people around. They're gonna drink and you're just asking to make it worse. With the drunk drivers happening, you have people doing donuts on Pinehurst and Tweedy, on Pinehurst and Southern, you know, it happens. They're drunk, people are young, it's gonna happen. Like so many have said, the young people are, they're gonna find a way to, to drink. They're gonna find a way to get in there. They're gonna ask for Heineken Zero and Sir Uncles or someone's gonna pour alcohol in them. Whatever it might be. I just hope that all of you take in mind everyone that's been coming in and count and think of them for the next time when you actually do vote on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Rosa.
My name is Rosa.
Más que nada me quiero dirigir a todos ustedes para preguntarles.
I would like.
La pregunta que nadie.
Me da pausa, por favor, señora, para traducir. I would like to direct myself to all of you and ask you.
No sé si todos ustedes sean padres.
I don't know if all of you are parents.
Tengan jóvenes, que no les gustaría que estuvieran expuestos a un lugar en el cual acudimos con ellos, ¿verdad?
To a place where we go there with them.
Deberíamos de tocarnos el corazón. Desafortunadamente, nuestra juventud ya no la han echado a perder. Hay muchas drogas.
Si no me da tiempo para.
Dele, dele.
If we don't touch our hearts and raise our kids, right? No le entendí lo demás que dijo porque.
Desafortunadamente, nuestros jóvenes hay mucha perdición.
Unfortunately, in our youth, there's a lot of bad influences and bad things happening already.
El hecho de que ustedes permitan que se venda alcohol cerca de una área recreativa.
The fact that you are considering to allow alcohol sales near them.
Es un peligro potencial.
The potential danger to them.
Hay atropellamientos, hay marihuana.
There are sales of marijuana already.
Nuestros jovencitas, desafortunadamente.
Young people.
No podrán continuar haciendo sus ejercicios.
Young females will not be able to continue doing their exercises there.
Pido que de verdad consideren todo esto porque ustedes quieren jóvenes.
You have young people.
Jóvenes sanos.
We want healthy young people.
Ayúdenos ustedes como representantes de las ciudades.
Help us as representatives of our city.
A que ya no perdamos más jóvenes.
That we don't lose more youth.
A que las drogas no lo sigan destruyendo, a que el alcohol.
That the drugs and alcohol don't continue destroying them.
Ahorita somos nosotros que pedimos.
Right now, we are the ones asking.
Les aplaudo que ustedes estén en un lugar como este.
I applaud you for being in a place like this.
No sé si tengan la necesidad de hacer una petición como nosotros.
I don't know if you have ever had the need to ask like us.
No sé si no se preocupan por sus hijos.
I don't know if you don't worry about your kids.
Por favor.
I ask you.
No permitan este tipo de cosas.
Do not allow this type of thing.
El parque de Southgate es un parque completo.
Is a full park.
Creo que a comparación de muchos, es un parque que tiene todo.
In comparison to other parks, this park has it all.
No permitan este tipo de cosas.
Don't allow this.
Como madre.
I ask you as a mother.
De cuatro jovencitas, de nietos.
And grandkids.
Que me preocupa mucho esto.
And that worries me a lot.
Lo imploro de verdad.
I ask you, please.
Ayúdenos a no permitir este tipo de cosas.
To not allow this kind of thing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Mi nombre es Andrew Hernández y soy la mamá de Panchito, un niño que le gusta jugar en el parque de Southgate.
Si me da pausa, por favor, señor. Si me da pausa, por favor, okay. I am the mother of Panchito who likes to be playing there.
Okay. Creo que el problema aquí en Southgate son los líquidos.
The problem here in Southgate are the liquids.
Primero el agua y ahora el alcohol.
First the water and now the alcohol.
No se me hace como justo, no me gusta.
I don't like this.
Primero porque yo soy parte de la comunidad.
I am part of the community. I live in Southgate.
Por cinco años.
For five years now.
Y a mí no me llegó una carta para notificarme que esto iba a suceder, que iban a vender alcohol en el parque.
And I didn't get any notification that there were alcohol sales being considered in the park?
Yo me enteré, creo que la semana pasada.
I found out like last week.
La carta está firmada por Jimmy Osaeta.
This letter is signed by Jimmy Osaeta.
Y me tomé el tiempo para buscar quién es él porque ni siquiera sé quién es él.
And I looked him up because I didn't even know who that was.
Y tiene un máster en kinesiología o algo así.
And he has a master's degree.
Lo compraría porque el deporte y el alcohol no se llevan de la mano.
Did he buy it because sports and alcohol don't go hand by hand?
Yo no sé porque nada más se le notificó a cierta parte de la comunidad o a una de mil.
I don't know why did he only notify a part of the city and not everybody.
Oh, yo tengo, yo tengo una foto de la carta. Esa fue enviada en octubre.
I have a picture of that letter. It was sent to us in October.
Firmada por Jimmy Osaeta. Digo que me tomé el tiempo de buscar quién es porque yo no de verdad no sé quién es.
I really don't know who he is.
Okay. Yo como mamá.
You, me as a mother.
Como miembro de la comunidad estoy preocupada.
As a community member, I am concerned.
Porque a mí no me gusta el alcohol. Yo soy hija de un alcohólico.
I don't like alcohol because I am a daughter of an alcoholic.
Y yo sé las consecuencias que tiene esto y sé lo que es lidiar con un borracho.
I know what the consequences are and I know what it is like to deal with an alcoholic.
Como latinos, no nos comportamos.
As Latinos, we don't behave.
Por eso nos tiene bien etiquetados el presidente y no me van a dejar mentir.
And that's why we are already named by the, by the president.
Demostrémosle que no somos lo que, lo que él piensa.
Let's prove to him that we're not what he thinks we are.
Yo no apruebo la venta de alcohol.
I don't approve of sales of alcohol.
Ustedes como personas que están representándonos, les gustaría que uno de sus seres queridos sea víctima de un hit and run?
You as our city representatives, would you like it if one of your loved ones was hit by a hit-and-run vehicle?
Ya sea su hijo, su hermano, su primo, su vecino. Yo creo que no les gustaría. Por favor, apóyenlo y no lo aprueben.
I don't think you would like that. Please do not support this.
Cuando ustedes estuvieron en las elecciones, yo anduve diciéndole a mis vecinos.
When you were going through your campaigning, I was talking to all my neighbors and they came here about the water issues.
Y ellos dijeron, no, cuenta con ello, los que, los que tenía la oportunidad de votar por ustedes. Ahora ustedes demuéstrenos que representan la comunidad.
Most of the people voted for you. Now you show us that you are representing our city well.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Jaime Ledón. I am here with the rest of the community to speak out against this reckless proposal to sell alcoholic beverages at the SoFi Sports Complex. This plan's not just misguided, it is irresponsible. I am deeply concerned that some of you are willing to sacrifice the safety and well-being in our community for, I don't know, a quick profit, not sure, I really don't know. But let's be clear about what this is. This is not about creating a better environment for our families. This is not about making the park a more welcoming space, as you've heard from many of us, that it's unsafe, it's not clean and it's dangerous. This is about turning our community's children's sporting events into profit-driven opportunities, all while ignoring the very real risks involved. When you allow alcohol in a setting where already emotional and competitive parents gather, you're inviting chaos. These parents, some of whom are already on the edge, will be even more volatile when you involve alcohol. And who will bear the brunt of that? Our children, our families, our community members. This is not just an inconvenience, it's a threat to public safety. I ask those of you who are supporting this proposal, where is your sense of responsibility? Where is your duty to protect the public? By voting in favor of alcohol sales, you're prioritizing a short-term financial gain over the long-term safety and integrity of this community. You're willing to turn a blind eye to the dangers of alcohol in a high-stakes, emotionally-charged environment, all to line the city's pockets. That's not leadership. It's a betrayal of the trust that has been placed into all of you. You were elected to look out for us, to protect us from harm, to protect our children, not to make a quick buck. This proposal does nothing to enhance the experience for families. It only serves to line the pockets of a few at the expense of many. I urge you, I pray that you take a hard look at what you're willing to support. Are you willing to sell our community's safety for a profit? I hope not. I strongly urge you to reconsider this reckless proposal and vote against it for the sake of our children and our families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leopoldo Manuel Quijano II. I live directly across the street from SoFi on Pinehurst. And just last week, we were the victims of, I guess, you know, knocking and running, but I didn't know what it was at the time. And so I had to ask my, my mom, because she has the, you know, the doorbell camera thing and what was going on and she said, there were people knocking first and then turning around and kicking the door behind them and then running into the park, into SoFi. And the camera has all of that. And then it happened, two nights later, someone kicked the door again. You know, I jumped up and I'm just like, what's going on? And then, you know, my, my wife, my son woke up. Everybody's like really, you know, in shock, on edge. And so I'm like, I, like half hour later, I go to go outside to go get something to eat and I turn the knob and it's kicked in again. It hit my hand, it hit my face right here and I lost it. And I ran after this person and, you know, hooting and hollering like a wild man and they run straight across the street and I chase them into a crowd into SoFi. And you want to add alcohol to this. These are kids that are not being watched. Their parents aren't there. A group of the kids, two of the kids that we saw, we saw a car roll up and just pick them up and take off. They're not supervised. Who is gonna stop these kids from drinking? Like someone said earlier, like, that, that security is gonna be, you know, blase at best. Oh, you know, I'm just gonna look over here while you guys give the kids a sip. Another thing that I saw were kids walking during the day from Tweedy. Like, just lines of kids walking into SoFi. With parents, of course, during the day, but I mean, like, we had asked if the, if the principal would speak out against, you know, the alcohol and they said, no, because they're getting in for free. That kinda sounds like a bribe to me. The golf course doesn't even have alcohol. They're fine? Have they ever asked? Have they ever needed it? Why do people need alcohol to have fun? No, they're gonna do it afterwards and then burn circles in the parking lot like they do every night at 11:30 because they don't respect any of the security guards there. They, they, I have video of people just hanging out across the street at midnight, past midnight, being loud. You know, the place is already not being watched. The only two nights that I've had of peace there were on Christmas and when the fires were going on because there was no one there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hilda Caballo, 9735 South One Avenue in Southgate. First of all, I just wanna say thank you, police officers and firefighters that work 24 hours. So thank you very much for what you do. I'm just here, it's heartbreaking. I can't believe my park, where I jog, where I clean, because I don't like, I don't like trash on the floor. Now with this alcohol, I'm like, I'm trying to escape my house because I smell all this smoke. Now I, I wanna go, okay, I'm gonna go to my park, I'm gonna jog, now I'm gonna smell alcohol? Come on, get real. I go to my park just to relax, to, to re- journalize, to recharge my batteries. Now with this alcohol at the park, I, I'm not gonna be able to go. It's just, we're gonna have all these borrachos. So please do our, please, what's that word I'm looking for? Yes, help us. Don't let it pass. I wanna go to my park. I've been living here for, I won't say my age, but I've been living here since I was four years old. I grew up with an alcoholic father. I don't even drink at all. I don't even drink at all. And I hate when people, when I see people drinking, especially at my park. So thank you very much. And one thing I want to, I want to say, if you knew Patricia Mitchell, she would not allow this. And you have her name on the, at the swimming park. If you're going to, if you're going to bring that alcohol, remove her name. Because she will not, she wouldn't like that. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Edgar Peralio, Melletson Avenue. So I don't know that there's more that, you know, could be said regarding this, this topic. I think that, you know, everything has been said. What I would like to touch on is representation. You guys are there to represent. You're the first line of defense, including some of the staff, the city manager, Parks and Rec director, and other people, police chief also. You all know the issues around the area. And it should have gone through you guys, but it got to this point. Right? I, I think that common sense would say that this is not something that the community wants based on what you've heard today. But, you know, I'd like to touch on another thing, right? This is something that I know went to the planning commission, but because SoFi is in the park, I believe it should have gone to the Parks and Rec Commission as well. Mainly because you want to hear more input. You want to hear more from the community. You want to hear more ideas, more concerns, get more feedback from everything, right? And that didn't happen. So I think that that has to be addressed. The process probably has to be revisited and perhaps have that go through the Parks and Rec Commission because it's at the park. There's, there's a campaign at the state level that is, that says parks make life better. I'd like to leave you with one question. How does alcohol make this park better? Thank you.
All right, this is a pretty impressive turnout. I didn't expect all these people to come out for this, but all right, that's great. So I'm in the minority opinion here. I actually want us to have this. And what it is, is it's an option. That's all it is. It's simply an option for those that choose to have either a glass of wine or a bottle of beer while they're having their meal. And I want to make it perfectly clear, there is no bar inside SoFi facility, no bar. It's a restaurant, I think it's a lounge, and Commissioner Ruiz stayed at a party room. So if someone wants to have a celebration, a gathering there, it's going to be structured as that, but it's, it's not going to be some rowdy out of thing that's going to get out of control. The thing that I have a problem with, could the city manager please explain what the CUP is and how the CUP works? And that the city, you know, has certain oversight, certain regulation over the SoFi regarding the CUP? If you could explain that, I'd appreciate that. But the, the problem that I have with the item report, there was, there was two. The, the first one included, stated that there was going to be security during the hours of alcohol sales. And then you get to the December 5th meeting, that were, actually went before with the applicant present in front of the planning commissioners, and that was taken out. I don't know who came up with that, removing the security stipulation of having security guards present during the sales of alcohol. It, it was removed. That needs to go back in. If you're going to move forward with this, you need to put that back in place. The second thing that was taken out was the hours of, of sales, of alcohol sales. It was originally going to be the cutoff time, 10:00 PM, and then on December 5th meeting, again, before, the applicant goes before the planning commission, it gets bumped up to 10:30. You got to change, I would take it to 9:00 PM. I think 9:00 PM or even 9:30 PM should be the cutoff time. So, so that's something that needs to be corrected, the cutoff time. But, you know, why do we have to be so stringent in our mentality when it comes to parks? You know, because parks are for kids, but they're also for adults. And if you go to Europe, you go to, you, you go to France, you go to Italy, what, what do they do there? They, they're able to have celebrations and gatherings and have a bottle of wine or have some, or some alcohol there.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're going to respect the right of the speaker. Please let him finish.
Thank you, sir. So if, if, you know, why do we have to be so puritanical in our approach when it comes to parks? I mean, you know, we're, we're adults here. And again, city manager, if you could just lay out the CUP and how the city has oversight regarding if the thing gets out of hand with the calls of service from the, for, for police to respond. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next. Go ahead.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Y solamente, es muy corto esto, ya todos lo dijeron.
I think it all has been said. Mine will be brief.
Okay. Aquí en mi mano tengo una, un, un código municipal.
In my hand, I have a municipal code.
Es el 749170.
Seven forty-nine, one seventy.
En el prohíbe.
In which it prohibits?
La posesión y venta de alcohol.
Possession and sales of alcohol?
En el parque de la ciudad.
In the Southgate Park, or in the park of South, of the city.
Posteriormente viene las acciones que se van a tomar.
After that is the following actions will be taken?
Si alguien es sorprendido tomando alcohol.
If someone is caught drinking alcohol.
Que será evicté del parque.
They would be evicted from the park?
Se le cobrará alguna multa?
A penalty will be assessed?
Posteriormente dice, el parque, es un, el parque y las facilidades son un lugar familiar.
The park and the facilities are a family area?
Para el, para el vecindario, para socializar.
For the neighborhood to socialize?
Bueno, ahora, señor Hurtado, recuerdo antes de la elección, usted llegó a mi casa.
I remember before the elections, you came to my house?
No es cosa personal.
This is not personal?
Pero estamos aquí poniendo todo en una balanza de lo que fue y de lo que va a ser.
We're here putting everything on a scale as to what was and what will be?
Usted mencionó, me dijo, que venía de su, de su retiro.
You told me that you were coming out of retirement?
Que le habían llamado, no recuerdo quién, porque no voy a mentir, que eran parte del council de Southgate. Y la razón es que lo estaban llamando usted, porque usted tenía experiencia anterior.
And that you were being called into the city council because you had experience from prior years?
Y que muchas o varias cosas en la ciudad estaban mal.
And that in many city, in many things, the city was wrong?
Entonces supuestamente usted iba a venir a apoyar y arreglar esas cosas que estaban mal.
Supposedly you were coming in to fix those things that were wrong?
Pues, desgraciadamente veo que, no sé qué está pasando.
Unfortunately, I don't see what's going on?
Nos está echando tierra.
You're throwing dirt on us?
Nada más usted, todos.
Not just you, but all of you.
Una pregunta.
A question.
¿Cuál es la visión de ustedes para la ciudad?
What is your vision for the city of Southgate?
En el futuro.
For the future.
Filarlos de alcohol?
Fill us with alcohol?
O hacernos avanzar y compararnos con otras ciudades que ya están más adelante de nosotros?
Or help us progress and, and become equals to other, other cities that are already ahead of us?
Hay una cosa que se menciona aquí en esta sociedad americana.
There's a thing that's mentioned in our American society.
Que venimos y trabajamos por el sueño americano.
We're here and we work hard for the American salary.
Todas esas personas que están aquí están trabajando por eso.
All of these people here are working towards that.
¿Cuál es la visión de ustedes?
What is your vision?
Eso es nada más, eso es todo lo que quiero decir.
That's all I want to say.
Muy buenas noches.
Good evening all.
A la alcaldesa y a todos los concejales y a todos los directores de esta hermosa ciudad.
To all members of council, mayor, and all department heads and directors of this beautiful city.
Yo no vivo en esta ciudad, pero hagan de cuenta que he vivido toda mi vida aquí.
I don't live in the city, but just consider that I, it's like I've lived in the city all my life.
Vivo en una comunidad reincorporada que es Walnut Park.
I live in an unincorporated area, which is Walnut Park.
Por ciento nueve años sin un parque.
Which has been a hundred and nine years without a park.
Y gracias a los residentes de Walnut Park y de otras ciudades pudimos tener.
Thanks to the residents of Walnut Park and other surrounding cities, we could have.
Un parque hace catorce meses, que es el de Walnut Park.
Fourteen months ago, the park of Walnut Park.
Ahora estoy aquí para apoyar.
Tonight I'm here to support.
A los residentes de Southgate.
The residents of Southgate.
Por todos estos cambios que se aproximan.
For all of these changes coming up.
Nosotros al no tener parques en Walnut Park, venimos aquí a, a Southgate porque los parques son hermosos.
Since we don't have parks in Walnut Park, we would come here to all the parks in Southgate.
Son grandes y bonitos.
They're large and beautiful.
Y nos sentimos muy bien cuando lo usamos.
And we feel very good when we come here.
Me sorprendió escuchar esta grave noticia.
I was surprised to hear this grave news.
Vamos a tener venta de alcohol.
That you are considering that we have sales of alcohol.
Ya tenemos la marihuana que es legal.
We already have marijuana, which is.
Se la fuman en los parques que es ilegal.
Which is.
Y todos nos la fumamos gratis.
And we all smoke it for free.
Qué vergüenza de veras.
Shame on you.
Mi respeto para todos ustedes.
My respect to all of you.
Pero deben de cumplir con su trabajo.
But you must do your job.
Que ustedes trabajan para la comunidad y los residentes de Southgate.
Because you work for the community and the residents of Southgate.
Igual que en todas las ciudades.
Same as all the other cities.
Su oficio es apoyar a la comunidad.
Your job is to support your community.
Y no se metan en cosas que no están legales como pasa alrededor de otras ciudades.
And don't interfere in things that are not legal as it happens in other surrounding cities.
No queremos favoritismos.
We don't want favoritism.
En Southgate.
In Southgate.
Ni en ningún otro lado de nuestras comunidades donde hay personas trabajadoras.
Nor in any of our other communities.
Educadas.
Hard-working people, educated.
Y que no haya drogas sino que haya salud para todos.
And we don't want drugs. We want health for everyone.
Les pido por favor que no aprueben.
I ask you, please do not approve.
El, la venta de este alcohol.
The sales of alcohol.
Porque va a perjudicar a niños.
It will jeopardize.
Mamás.
Children and mothers.
Adultos.
Adults.
Y vamos a tener más accidentes.
And we will have more accidents.
Más personas que anden marihuanos o que anden alcoholizados.
More people under the influence of drugs and alcohol.
Que perjudicar a niños o a personas adultas inocentes.
Could potentially also harm other kids and families.
Piensen en eso.
Think about that.
Y hagan lo que tengan que hacer.
And do what you have to do.
Y si no lo hacen.
And if you don't.
Créanmelo, que van a ser parte.
You will be part of.
De esos beneficios en contra de la salud.
Those benefits against.
Y también, lo que pase, van a ser criminales. Gracias.
What will happen is you'll be criminals. Okay, I don't see anyone else coming, so I'm going to close the audience. First, do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have a few emails that I received regarding this item. The first one, Martin Diaz expresses a support for SoFi and the request to serve beer and wine at their facility. He believes this addition will enhance the experience for families, players, and guests. He emphasizes that SoFi is a vital part of the community and trusts that they will manage alcohol service responsibly with, while maintaining a family-friendly environment. He hopes the city will support in improving the service they provide. I received another email from, from unknown. This person states, hello, I'm a middle schooler studying in the city of Southgate. I'm here to comment on the decision and progress of the alcohol situation. I think selling alcohol in a community park disrupts a family-friendly atmosphere that makes these spaces enjoyable to everyone. Parks are meant to, for recreation and relaxation, not for the chaos and alcohol that it can bring. Your desire to profit should not overshadow the safety and well-being of the community. I think that considering the impact on visitors, prioritizing the welcoming environment instead will benefit everyone. Another one is from Janine Guzman. She writes in support of SoFi. She believes this addition would enhance the experience for families and guests. Janine compares SoFi to other soccer centers that offer the same amenity and trusts SoFi will manage it responsibly while maintaining a family-friendly atmosphere. She also suggests that people drinking in the park could be encouraged to dispose their trash in the center. Janine hopes the city will approve the request to benefit the community. The next one is from Ruth Clavelo. As she states, as a parent of a Manchester City program player, I support SoFi, the Southgate's request to serve beer and alcohol. It would enhance the experience for parents while maintaining the safe, family-friendly environment SoFi is known for. I trust them to manage it responsibly and hope that the city approves it. I have another one from Alejandro Cortez. I'm a resident of Southgate and I disagree with the sale of alcoholic beverages in the park as there is no added benefit to doing this so people already buy alcohol. And if they are going to do so, they're going to do it elsewhere. So there is no need to do something that could facilitate the purchase of alcohol beverages to all, including those who may be underaged. There's another one from Nancy Manrique, who writes to express strong support for SoFi and the request to serve beer and wine at their facility. As a parent involved in a Manchester City program, Nancy values a family-friendly environment. SoFi provides and believes offering alcohol would further enhance the experience. I have one from Sergio Peñate, who writes to express strong support for SoFi. As a parent involved also in the Manchester City soccer program, he values the family-friendly environment. He hopes the city will approve the request to allow SoFi to continue improving services in the community. I have Lupe Pérez, a Southgate resident in Area 4, who expresses strong opposition of the proposal to sell alcohol at the soccer facility. Lupe argues that the alcohol in the park would increase risks of alcohol-related injuries and impair judgment, putting both children and adults in danger. Lupe believes the park should be safe for the community and urges mayor and city council to reject the proposal and ensure it is never considered again. Eli García writes to express strong support for SoFi as a parent of the child also in the soccer program. Eli appreciates the family-friendly environment that SoFi has created and believes offering alcohol would enhance the experience. And I have one from Claudia Rivera. And she sent an email a couple of weeks ago with an attachment that I have forwarded to you and it's available for the public. She would like me to read it again. And she states, Councilman Alreals should have to recuse himself from any discussion and vote on this issue. He has already shown a bias. He has called people, emailed, had meetings, and even came to the planning commission in opposition to the issue. Thank you, Claudia. And then the last one is from Belle García, who expresses strong disapproval of a proposal. As, as a parent, she is concerned about the risk alcohol could pose to the safety and well-being of the children and families in our community. She emphasizes that the park should remain safe and a family-friendly space, free of alcohol-related behaviors. Belle argues the council to consider the negative impact this decision could have on the park's atmosphere and the community's effort to maintain a positive environment. She advocates for keeping the park safe and a welcoming place for families and their children. She advocates for keeping the park safe and a welcoming place for families and their children. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's the end of the emails.
Thank you. So with that, can I get a motion to continue this item to February 25th?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Broca, please.
Councilmember Abalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Vice Mayor Barron?
Yes.
Mayor Batavila?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Okay, yes.
Is that okay that I make a quick comment?
We already voted.
I know, but it's for the benefit of the audience in terms of why things get on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would say if it's unrelated to what we just discussed, you may comment if it has any bearing at all, then we need to protect the record for the benefit of the...
So let me see if I can touch on this. It's to inform people that when we have an item on the agenda, there's no set decision made until after a presentation. So the fact that an item's on the agenda is not that we're putting it on because we want to support it or that we're against it. And can I proceed with that?
I think you made your point.
I just want to make sure that they understand that... Can I do that?
I think you made your point.
Does that make sense?
If you... Okay, we cannot go forward.
If you want to talk, we can't do that.
Okay, if Mr. Hurtado, I mean Councilmember Hurtado, if you want to have a separate conversation, you can go ahead with the...
Will do.
But at this time, I mean, we are moving this to February 25th. We hope to see all of you here next, you know, next meeting. Thank you for coming out. So at this time, we are going to go into a five-minute recess. Okay, thank you all for waiting. Now we are back from the break and we'll go on to item number two.
The city council will consider providing further guidance whether to implement a remote participation option or keep its current practice in place without further change. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have a request that was made by two council members to bring back a discussion that we had had earlier regarding remote participation options for the city and commission meetings. Sometime back, in the time of COVID, the city had added a remote function such as Zoom, the Zoom product that was used to allow people that were not in the chambers to call in and participate. This was common in cities across the state, probably across the country, because people could not come in due to COVID restrictions. The city maintained that into last year and kept that service. And then a decision was made later last year to determine if that would be continued or if a change would be made. And there was discussion about both maintaining the remote option as well as looking at adding a video YouTube channel option, which was not at the city. The city did not have video offered as an option. It was only audio. At the time, the council voted to discontinue the remote option and add, invest in cameras and the equipment to do filming and video. So that is now an extra feature that the city did not have at that time and is now being viewed right now for those on the camera and for the community. And it's a new feature that was added at that time. Since that time, the city and the commissions are available, have their videos recorded live and both recorded and they can be accessed by the community. Now, there's been a request to review the concept of bringing back a call-in feature, be it Zoom or maybe some other system, and look at the costs and the sort of the issues that come, both good and bad, about using that option. I'll just go over some basic background, look at some surrounding communities. As mentioned, back in COVID, all agencies were offering a call-in feature. But over time, the majority of cities in our Gateways area, immediate area, have pulled that option back. So in the last survey, we checked, 28 out of 32 surrounding cities no longer offer the remote call-in option. Four still do. Admittedly, I was able to contact one city close by that is using it. They said a couple of people might use it per item, depending on the item. So it does get used, but not to a great degree. That being said, when the city was using it, one of the concerns we... One of the issues we ran into was sometimes having connection problems that were either on the city's side with a disconnect or an inability to use the program so that people couldn't call in or occasionally the actual user would have a problem. And it wasn't the city's problem, but it was their problem. And so there was an inability to hear them or they couldn't hear us or the system would be down. And the concept of allowing this system creates an opportunity to both be able to interact well at home, but it also creates a channel that we would need to keep maintained. And in the event it was shut down due to a technical problem, it would create the need to stop the meeting until we could correct the issue. If we could correct it, then we could continue the meeting. But the concern would be if we could not, technically, we'd be in violation of the Brown Act and we would have to discontinue the meeting and meet at another time. This is certainly... Ideally, we don't have technical problems, but we did run into them in the past. In addition, there might be a case to be made if our YouTube feed fails, even if the call-in feature doesn't fail, which happened last meeting where the audio was not working for a period of time. There's the potential that that could be viewed as a violation of the Brown Act because someone wants to call in, but they can't hear the item and we could get into difficulty again. This is certainly a reason for why many of the cities around us have discontinued the use due to that problem. When you don't offer that option, then the only time you'd run into, say, having to cancel a meeting would be for those that are coming in person. If, say, the city hall doors were locked or the council doors were locked and someone could not access. When you offer it electronically, when the system's not working, it's the equivalent of a door shut and they can't get in. So that's just a concern. Doesn't mean it's not possible, but just wanted to be realistic on some of the complexities of technology. Another thing is just looking at, there would be some additional costs. And so I just wanted to, it's not a huge cost, but I just want to quantify it. I think our clerk and our two staff members that support the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission do a great job of handling presentations, the vote, keeping everything on the agenda, the timing, as well as handling our YouTube feed. It's a lot for one person. The ability to handle a queue of people calling in or on Zoom, making sure that they're connected, that they're opening the channel, shutting it at the right time, as well as making sure the person's queued up at the right time and timing that, as well as the people in person. It would, it's a strong recommendation. We would have to have a second staff member at each meeting. This is the model of cities typically that do this. So that has an extra cost of staffing, as well as if we did use the Zoom product, there's a citywide license. So this is factored in in the financial section of roughly $12,000 a year. Of course, the benefits, I think without saying, there is an ability to connect with the city without having to come into the chambers. And that gives more flexibility for people that perhaps have trouble getting access to the facility or for whatever reason don't wish to come in person. So there is that benefit that I think goes without saying. It's just a matter of trying to make sure that if we are sort of trying to offer this option, that we can deliver from a technology perspective and make sure our staffing is sufficient to make sure that... significant, sufficient to make sure that we're not missing, dropping things and fiddling with our organization of our meetings. So with that, that's sort of a summary of the items, the issues, and staff is looking for further guidance as to what direction to take in the future.
Thank you, City Manager. So at this time, unless there are any comments from council before, I'm going to go ahead and open it to the audience. Yes, go ahead. Is it green?
Oh, at the present?
There you go.
Thank you. I'm kind of against it because there's a lot of folks that are, they're not knowledgeable with technology and that's going to make it harder for them to, like, I mean, if the doors aren't going to be open because you guys are going to do it remotely, then that's going to be less accessible for our community. A lot of our folks, they're not, well, techno, you know, technology is not for everybody and we have to take that in consideration. Not only that, it's a difference voicing what we think in person than saying it remotely. It's way different. So I think it's very important to come in person and actually express what you feel rather than saying it remotely. It's way different. And I do understand COVID, we went through COVID, but now it's getting better and I think it's best doing it in person. So I favor on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So what I want to stress to the council members, fuck Zoom. Zoom is shit. Our city is not sophisticated enough to take on Zoom. We had all these problems, but you know, before the 2024 mayor did away with it and, and dumped our beloved Zoom system, but he has a point that we had problems with the Zoom system. So that's why I'm stressing the council members to go with a phone-based call-in feature. We're talking about cellular towers, satellites, people can use their touchpad on their touchscreen on their phone to dial in and if they want, they can watch it in real time on our YouTube channel, on a tablet or on a, or on a laptop. But with a phone-based call-in feature, so you understand that this is the same system that the LA County Board of Supervisors use for their public meetings. There's also the same system that the Metro Board of Directors use for their public meetings. I know this because I took part in two Metro Board meetings last year with the phone-based call-in feature and also with the LA County Board of Supervisors with the phone-based call-in feature, advocating on behalf of the Southeast Gateway Line and I wanted to, you know, voice in and root for that. So how do I do that? With the phone-based call-in feature. Thank God they had that, otherwise I wouldn't have been able to do a public comment. The other thing regarding the cost, so in the item report, it states 12,180 would be for the additional staff to run, to man the phones. Well, if you recall the Granicus deal that the Rotters killed back in November 2023 where we could have had four cameras in here plus an operator running the system remotely, it states in there that that would have been funded with the Public Access Fund and ARPA funds. So if you want to know how you're going to cover the costs, there you go, Public Access Fund, ARPA funds. The thing else I want to say is, you know, we're talking about taking our city forward and I can easily make an argument that our council members have done more to hold us back as a city than they have taken us forward. And this right here, this item right here, is going to be the proof. This is going to be the real test as to whether or not you folks have the vision and the, the, the vision to take our city forward. And the thing I want to say to the mayor, look, mayor, this is your opportunity to be a champion here for the people and to be a hero for the people and to smash the shit out of this and, and, and give us access, you know, so that we can participate from home. You know, also back to, you know, with the, with the alcohol thing, you know, I like options. That's what, I like people to have options. I don't want the City Council to decide for me whether or not I want to drink liquor at, at the park, at the SoFi Center or here if I want to participate remotely or if I want to participate in person. Let me decide, but give me the option. I like options and, oh, what was the other point? Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, please.
Edgar Palayo, Madison Avenue. So just a few things, I, I say that this is really about participation. You know, I know someone mentioned that some of the older folks aren't, you know, good with technology and that's true, but this is just another option for those that are. So I, I think that it's going to make a big difference in regards to participation and I think that's why you guys should vote in favor of it. You know, there, there's a lot of, I guess, low voter turnout here, low participation and, and really this is a way to get people's opinion and feedback on different topics and, and issues in the city. So I really think that this is something that you guys should consider and vote in favor of and, and bring us into, into where we are now in the age of, you know, I mean, there's telemedicine, right? You can have a doctor's appointment via a tablet. Why can't we call in and give our feedback via a phone? So I, again, I think that, I like what City Manager Rob Houston said, right? That it doesn't mean that it's not possible. In other words, it's possible, we just have to find a way to do it. So I think that, you know, the, the community's here and you guys should find that way to do it and make it happen for us. I think that it's really something that would enhance everybody's participation here in the city and I urge you guys to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Liz Reese from Kaufman. I want to echo what my colleague before me said. I think it's important to open the opportunities, to increase the opportunities for people to be able to call in and give you guys their concerns and opinions on a lot of things. I think we could all agree that there's definitely been less participation since the Zoom option was taken out and it's, it's, it's a loss. There's definitely people who abuse the system, who did a lot of damage, who were very rude. But I think, you know, there's more benefits than, than that and it's more important to hear the people who can make it. And I myself am somebody who tries to come, but it's, it's a sacrifice. I, I'm not seeing my baby go to sleep, you know? I eavesdrop on the baby cam, but there's only so much and, and it's really hard not being there, not saying goodnight to her and even bringing her hairs out of the question right now. There's still no changing table in the bathrooms. She's really loud and out of control, which is good, but it's, it's, it's hard not being able to really have that flexibility anymore. And one of the cities that does provide the call-in feature is Corahay, who's next to us. And when I asked their mayor, she's like, yeah, we want to hear what our residents have to say. And it's, it's pretty well-used according to her. And so I don't really see why it would be impossible to make on, notice on the agenda, setting limitations or letting folks know that they recognize that there are limitations in technology and that there can be connectivity issues and that they'll assume the risk. If that's not possible, then why not invest in the technology? Why not increase our broadband? Other cities are doing it, other agencies are doing it. As I mentioned before, the Board of Environmental Safety, who, who runs the DTSC, still has that Zoom option for their meetings. And when I was there, we had hundreds of people on the call. It was definitely not easy finding, you know, the broadband, but we thought it was a very good investment to make our meetings accessible to people all over the state. And I think that that's important here too. I, I would honestly like to hear other people's opinions, even if I don't agree with them. And even when people, you know, write in, which is, I think, you know, we have a pretty good thing with that, being able to write in till four, it's, I think, as residents, we lose that voice. You guys get to see the emails and we don't.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close the audience. Do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three. The first one is from Lupa Perez and she state, she's a resident of Area 4. She expresses support for allowing remote participation in the City Council and commission meetings. Lupa argues that remote access would accommodate residents' work and family schedules and would increase trust in local government. She urges the mayor and council to provide the option to avoid fostering any type of mistrust. The second email is from Jennifer Seibert, who expresses concern about the proposed remote participation options for the City Council meetings citing issues with the reliability of current call-in systems. She points out that the existing options, such as an in-person attendance or emailing the city clerk, are sufficient. Jennifer also highlights the problems with under, I'm sorry, unregulated call-ins such as profanity and technical failures, which would disrupt the meetings. She believes it would be physically irresponsible, fiscally, I'm sorry, irresponsible to invest in any unreliable system and suggests revisiting civic duties by reviewing agendas and using your current methods of participation until a more reliable system could be available. The last one is from Jimmy Ozaieta and he expresses strong support for creating community channels that allow residents to participate in these meetings, particularly through the call-in feature. He believes this would enable working-class residents to engage in civic matters without sacrificing worker-family obligations. While acknowledging the cost of the Zoom platform and additional staff support, he, he suggests that staff training could reduce these expensive expenses. He also notes that the current political climate may cause fear among residents, leading to reluctance in attendance in person. He urges the council to ensure their decision aligns with the community's needs and values. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I know that Councilman, you brought it up and also Councilwoman Navalas, you brought it up. Mr. Rios, Councilwoman Manrios, would you like to speak on it first?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, an important issue and, you know, I thought when, when COVID hit and we first had the emergency, well, we couldn't meet in person, we ended up meeting via Zoom and, and so forth and to continue, we had to continue doing the business for the city. And so I never, I never thought we would be in the situation where we'd take it off because people were coming, people were calling in, people were voicing their, we had more public engagement. Of course, we don't always want to hear what people have to say, but it's important to, to voices in the community, hearing from voices in the community is very important, not just for one issue, but for a lot of issues because we make a lot of decisions here. So I value that and I know some of my colleagues also, where, where there is more involvement from the community, there is better management of city governing. Where there's less involvement of the community, that's where you have issues. So I think it's, it's incumbent on us to, to think about it, really, really important. You know, people come to City Hall to listen for agenda and sometimes they have to wait hours, like some have been here since 6:30, what time is it? It's already 9:00. They could be at their home waiting for their agenda to come online and then they could call, talk to the issue. Some people have mobility issues. There's a lot of seniors in our community. There's a lot of hardworking people in our community that go early, they have to get up at four o'clock in the morning to get to a job and work hard labor and they can't be here that late. And so it's important that we provide accessibility and that's, that's what's so important with this feature. And what we're talking about is miniscule, $20,000 for civic engagement. That's our job to involve the public. I can't see us not voting for this. This is so important to me, to the community. We talk about IT problems, we have three IT staff. We can rearrange their schedule, get them to get here. They should be here. This is important, the pub, dealing with the public, we have the staff, you know? Costs shouldn't be an issue. We just spent, we allocated, you know, $750,000 for industrial warehouse to survey that and do all kinds of assessment. This is only $20,000. This is involving our community, folks, that, those that don't have access, that can't get here. So this is about transparency and accountability, okay? And not, you know, it's disappointing. Today, a lot of people came because of the alcohol issue. Otherwise, they wouldn't be here. We would be alone right here talking to each other. That's not governing, you know? That's not governing. We need the public to be here, present. When we have a lot, we have a lot of issues, we have a lot of challenges and opportunities moving ahead and we need you folks and we, I'm thankful for you folks being here today, spending your time. You could be, choose other places to be. So yes, I, I, we wanted to put it, I think it's important, they'll say, well, other cities, you know, are taking it out. And I've been to some of those cities, how they cut off people and, and don't let them talk. That's not what we want. We want people to voice their concerns. That's very important, you know? So it shouldn't be about staff. We have the staff. It shouldn't be about costs when we're talking about $20,000. This is important. It's not just for this council meeting, but the Planning Commission, the Parks Commission, those should all have an opportunity so the public could weigh in on some of the community issues. Isn't, I, I would think that that's, this is a basic fundamental thing. I mean, they moved our elections from March to November so, to have more increased participation with the general presidential election and the, and so why shouldn't we continue in that mode of involving the community? This is what, this issue is all about access and allowing the public to hear the voices, the different voices of the community. Yeah, I might not always agree, but it's important to hear those voices. We need to hear them. We made decisions that are very important, just like the one today, and if people are not here, we're going to make decisions not based on what the public, but what we, we think is right. So it's important that you guys keep us in check. It's the checks and balances, folks. So, yeah, this is important.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember Rios. And I think you said it very eloquently, accessibility is transparency. Because at the end of the day, you voted for us, we're here to serve you. But sometimes our jobs are a little challenging when we don't hear from you. And when we don't hear from you, it tells us you're doing a good job. At least that's how I look at it, doesn't mean that's the case. So if you are not calling, if you are not emailing any of us five up here, we don't know what's happening out in the community. Yes, we drive around, yes, we let our department heads know what's going on, but at the end of the day, we need to hear from you. So that's why this issue is very important to me because I got elected during COVID and let me tell you, those were very challenging years. Because I heard from my colleagues, oh, well, you know, if COVID wasn't here, we would be doing this, we would be doing that. A lot of community events were canceled. We were all isolated. The only way we knew we were around was through Zoom. So I know that we included Zoom in here, but did we do City Manager options for the call-in? Not so much the Zoom aspect of it. Again, when you make phone calls, sometimes the calls drop, but most likely than not, they do go through. So to me, it was more of a call-in feature so that it's accessible to the community. And I know a lot of young families are here in Southgate, a lot of professionals live in Southgate and don't have the time to be in here and sit down and wait until the item comes up. It'd be nice to just pick up the phone and say, this item is important to me, I want to state my case and be heard. I know we just had a reelection and one of my concerns was, if I didn't win, how can I tell this body what my concerns are? It'd be nice to be able to make a phone call because sometimes our schedules get very busy. Life happens all the time. And sometimes we plan to be in certain places, but life will throw us curveballs and we can't make it, but at least we can pick up the phone and say, hey, this is important for me, I want to make sure my voice is heard. So that's why I'm in support of this item, but I wanted a call-in feature. I appreciate the Zoom portion of it, but that does have limitations and we have had issues in the past with the Zoom, but a call-in feature, I think that might be a little bit more feasible. So I would recommend if we can look at that option instead of the Zoom portion of it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Hockpato?
Thank you. I'm going to say it was roughly about 10 years ago, I saw a meeting in one of the neighboring cities through YouTube and it was live so that people can watch it. And I thought that was fantastic because that way people And I thought that was fantastic because that way, people can see how policymakers make decisions. And way back then, well before COVID, I was pushing for something like that. Unfortunately, the systems, when they fail, one of the issues that happens is that we must stop the meeting. I agree with what my colleagues brought up, that we want to encourage public participation. One of the speakers talked about how sometimes people are rude. That's your constitutional right. You have a right to come in here, you can cuss me out here, and I can't do anything about it. Freedom of speech allows you to use whatever language. You heard one gentleman, he's actually been pretty calm today, but he uses that colorful language, oh, he doesn't hide it, he loves it, he loves it. I won't mention his name, I'll let him decide to mention it later on when he says that, but whatever. And you know what? That's your constitutional right. But what we have here is that there is no perfect system. We had an item on the agenda during COVID from our park director, Steve Costley. You can have your drink of water, I'm going to talk about you, you don't have to stop. And that item was so that we can vote for a grant that the city was getting of roughly one and a half million dollars. The system went down. And it took about two and a half, three hours to put it back in place, whatever amount of time, it was forever. And we had to continue with the meeting, we had to wait because that grant, we had to make a decision on taking that grant that night. If we, if we had had to cancel the meeting, we would have lost that money. So, even if you have a call-in feature, I just want to get this clear. If we have YouTube, or we have the YouTube, and we have the call-in feature, if YouTube goes out, can we continue with the meeting?
I would probably defer to our city attorney how that gets interpreted as far as access and limitation, but my understanding is, is that it would just take a complaint from somebody who tried to access to create a Brown Act investigation, and it would have to likely be stopped in order for us to confirm.
And whatever action we would have taken is a violation of law. That's, I've reached out to colleagues in other cities, and this is why they moved away from it. I talked to our IT staff, I talked to what I consider our homegrown expert, our treasurer, Jose de la Paz. I'm horrible with technology, I'll tell you that. I tell people that when I go to your door, you have a doorbell, I'd rather just knock. I mean, that's how bad I am with technology. But he can't, he cannot give me an answer that satisfies me that if we have, were you going to say something?
Oh, wait, my turn.
Okay. That if the system goes down, we have to cancel the meeting, and any action we wanted to take. Look, was it last meeting or two meetings ago when the system went haywire? And we couldn't, we couldn't even start the meeting? Or actually, we were able to start the meeting, but that is because there was no expectation of calling in. But had we had a call-in feature, we would have had to postpone the meeting until that system went up. And I don't think it took that long for that one, I think it was like 30 minutes or so. But it's gone down before for hours, and there's nothing that we can do. We had one night where there was no sound, I think, as well, and there's nothing we can do. And we can have, you know, all our IT experts coming in, trying to take a look at it, they couldn't fix it. That is my concern, that we'll have items on the agenda that the public, you know, think about it, if we really had a concern about people calling in and cussing us out, I would rather have you do it by phone than here in person, right? I mean, that's just the way it is. But you're welcome to come in here, make your comments to do that. And I'm concerned that if we don't, if we go into a call-in feature and we set an expectation that if the system goes down, we're going to have to postpone the meeting and potentially lose on some opportunities. We had an issue at one meeting where the system went down twice on the same person, and he made an accusation that it was done intentionally by the city clerk. And that was not the case, it's just that the system went down, you know? And that's, that's how, we had a night where a gentleman made a comment where he made a, didn't think about what he was saying, but he made a threat. We didn't hear it here. In here, we could not hear it, but on Zoom, you can actually hear the audio, and people made an accusation saying that I'm applauding his threat. We didn't even hear it in here. And that's the problem, when you call in, we can't clearly hear what everybody's saying. So, again, we want participation, you know? And so, you're welcome to come in here. And I have a concern, if we can at some point find the system that we can, that we find more reliable, I'll more than gladly be on the front line saying, let's bring that in. But I have a concern that we just cannot fix.
Okay, there is no back and forward here, thank you. Councilman Barom.
Yes, thank you. So, first, I'd like to just point out that today was one of the prime examples of how great it is to have civil engagement from our community, right? Our residents came in, they were here to be able to voice their opinions versus their concerns, we were here to listen, we were able to walk out there and thank them for being here present, we were here to offer our business cards or information if they would like us to, to, you know, give them a call. And I know that our council members here, all five of us, have always made ourselves available to every resident here. I know Al has met with many residents that had the issues with the SOFI. I've met with many residents that had issues with the drinking that's happening near the basketball courts and also at the parks near my area and Area 1. You know, when we have problems, council makes themselves available to our residents, that's our job, that's what we sign up for. Sometimes, it gets here late in the night, some of us want to leave at a certain time, they want to go home, other of us, we'll stay here and do business. You know, we're here to serve. So, I think that this is, today was an example of really good governance and really good participation by our residents, and that is something that I value, that I value having a resident come in and provide me that feedback here in person. I also worry that there's many instances where we had difficulties with the Zoom call-in. Before, two years ago, I was just a Parks and Recs Commissioner and a resident, and I would call in on Zoom and then try to go back and hear what the call sounded like, and you couldn't hear sometimes my comment. And I was worried that maybe my point didn't get across to the people that I was trying to speak to. And that's what I worry about, is that, you know, when we have these features, are we really getting what the resident is trying to tell us? And I can tell you one thing, today, I understand what the resident was telling us because they were here, they were telling me, they were here in person, letting us know exactly what their concerns were. And I think that that shows a value that I still think is important. So, if we can find a solution for, you know, temporary outages and issues where there's concerns with that, I'm all for it. I think that there's an opportunity there, right? Because we're here to hear what you guys want to tell us. But I'm not going to do that at the expense of having things that we need to conduct business on and not be able to provide a reliable way of doing it. So, with the current examples, I don't see that as a viable option regardless of the amount that it is. Because I think that if we're going to spend the money, we should spend it on something that's reliable, something that's out there that we can, we can do good with. But what we're doing now, I don't see that as a viable option. But again, thank you all for being here. I think that that is my preferred method of hearing your voice. I think that there's value in that, and I hope that you guys, as residents, see the value of showing up and being here. And I, and I trust in my community, when there's an issue, when there's something that's passionate to you, you will be here. I believe that. Because when I was a young kid in 2023, when we were going through Recall, I remember being passionate and seeing my community fill this room. 2003, yeah. Yeah, so, I'm not that young, but really, that's all I have.
Yeah, you were a baby.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, I was going to ask you, our city treasurer, if you have any words of wisdom.
So, all of you know where I stand on this item, on this topic. As a technologist, I've always been supportive of, you know, software, technology, videoconferencing, the different methods and modes of us communicating, you know, with the public or with each other. And so, I'm supportive of this item, and, you know, I was asked recently if there was a solution that would never fail, you know? And the honest answer is no, there's not one solution out there that would never fail. But we could get closer to that, you know? And to get closer to that, it does require an investment. And so, an investment of $10,000, $15,000, even if it's voice only, even audio dialing. The audio dialing, we have to realize that it runs through the same network as the video. It's not a separate line, it's the same broadband that's delivering the video through Zoom and delivering the audio through voice over IP. That means that we do need to upgrade certain things, like Liz Reese mentioned, there has to be an upgrade to the network, we have to prioritize voice and video, you need more than one line, that gets you closer to actually having a fail-proof system closest to that. But issues happen with technology, that's why you have IT people. If not, IT people would be without a job. You do need, you know, some additional support when it comes to supporting these technologies. It might not be here in council chambers, but someone in the back and, you know, on an ongoing basis, more technology introduced, more technology needs to be maintained. So, the cost does go up, but you do get something that would be more reliable than what was there before and potentially could get you closer to where you want, you know, you want to see it. That cost is not 50,000, or 60,000, or 70,000 a year. I would estimate, just on my nearly 30 years of experience in this industry, we're looking at closer on a recurring annual basis, 120,000 to 150,000. And I could break down that number easily to show you why that would be. So, you have to make an investment and take this investment serious, and to accomplish what you really want, and that's the engagement with the community and the participation with very little to no interruptions. The rest of the operational procedures on, you know, how much people could speak and all the, you know, that's just operational, those are workflows, those are things that could be addressed. I think, you know, if we want to take this topic on seriously, we have to really invest in it. And, you know, tonight, you have to, you know, decide what direction you want to go or, you know, what the feature has for this type of item or this type of engagement with our community. But I leave it in your hands, you know, you have to weigh the benefits versus the risks. But that's why all of you were elected to decide this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. City clerk, do you want to say anything?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. When I came in almost three years ago, I came into Zoom not knowing how to do anything. That's all I knew was Zoom. When we introduced the, what we have now, it's just a learning process. Again, you have a tough decision, and I really hate to be in your shoes. I have seen both, both the resident side of it, and I completely understand the accessibility of it. I understand that we need to be a little more open and available and be able to, I loved, I loved being home and I was able to call in and say something or listen to the meeting. However, I also like the YouTube part of it where I can actually see it. But I also see and have seen and have head-on faced the issues with the Zoom. Again, I think that, I don't think that that's a good option, it hadn't been for us because of the technical difficulties, and that's just my perspective of it. I see both sides of this, I love the transparency of it all. However, I have spoken to staff and I, and we, and they are ready to take on whichever way that you decide to go tonight. I appreciate you letting me speak on this, and I thank everyone for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to say?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I really like the comments that are coming forward. Just want, I think there is an opportunity to make that investment, I think that, that's what I'm hearing, I'm hoping, praying. I hope we can find a compromise too. I think in terms of those people that call in maybe have less time, you know, versus those that come in and spend the time here, I think that's also a way of kind of managing. And then, you know, really, like you mentioned, Mr. City Treasurer, kind of looking at that technology, you know, kind of spending some time reviewing it and trying to come up with, you know, and maybe looking at some of those cities that are already doing it, right? And have, are ahead of us, and looking at best practices. We know that the metro's doing it, we know that LA County's doing it. So, kind of learning from others and then seeing how we can move forward. And just because I think this is, again, it goes back to, you know, the voice is the community, this is democracy. Right now, democracy overall is, you know, we see what's going on in the national scene and everything else, and I think this is important. So, I'm glad to hear some of the comments from my colleagues.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to see if I can get an answer to the question I asked for legal advice, if we have a call-in feature. And, you know, I think, you know, especially what our treasurer said, that there's good technology out there that allows a call-in feature, but if the YouTube part goes out and now the people in the, that are at home can't see anymore what's going on, is it legal to continue with the meeting?
Well, if it's a YouTube feature itself, that's just a monitoring device, that's not an official part of the city's minutes, right? The observations that someone might see on YouTube aren't part of the official record, so we don't track that, right? The official record are the minutes that the city council approves. Those minutes are drawn from public comments made by residents or other members of the public that come to the city council meeting. If you allow for the opportunity to receive those public comments telephonically and in person, you have to receive them from all, otherwise, you don't have an accurate public comment opportunity. So, there are problems with proceeding forward when you have not allowed for the public to comment telephonically, that's the problem. And the city council would have to stop those meetings, otherwise, you run the risk of that. The other thing the council needs to consider is, how does this all play out in a public hearing like tonight? Public hearings, you know, we just heard comment from the members of public, right? And we're continuing that. But those comments tonight form part of what we call the administrative record. In the future, if there's a judicial challenge to the action the council may take on that particular item, we have to provide those comments to the court. It's because it's part of the administrative record. Those comments include statements made from the microphone, and they have to include statements made by individuals phoning in on the public. So, making sure that we are able to have a accurate administrative record, making sure that we have accurate minutes that reflect the comments made telephonically is the goal here, and how we accomplish that has to take into account technological limitations. Does that answer your question?
No.
Oh.
Let me try it this way. So, let's pretend we have the system right now, the call-in feature and YouTube.
And YouTube.
Or the, what?
Streaming service.
Yeah. So, the service we have. How would someone at home know when to speak? If this system goes down, they can't see it.
Well, they can't, right now, the YouTube, it's just streaming, if the streaming isn't there.
That's right, but if it goes down because it went down?
If it dies, they wouldn't know.
Right, so then, would that, my question again is, if that were to happen and then people don't know when to call in and we continue with the meeting, is that now a violation of the Brown Act?
If you're allowed for the call-in feature? If you're allowed for the call-in feature, yes, because...
That's my concern.
Yeah, that would be the problem.
And again, I think, knowing my colleagues, all of us want the call-in feature. Every one of us wants people to be able to communicate. But the danger that we put the city, we put the city at risk because of a system we cannot control. And everybody I've talked to in other cities and even our staff here, our IT experts and our local treasurer, who's the foremost expert in technology, at least compared to us, they say there's really not a whole lot we can do on that. And my concern is exactly what I just said. If the system goes down, even if the call-in feature is working perfectly, how would they know when to call in if they can't see it? And that's my concern. So again, that would be a violation of the Brown Act? Is that what you're saying? It would be...
That would be my analysis here, that you, it would be disruptive of the meeting if you could not capture everyone's comments.
Okay. Now's my turn. I hear what my colleagues and all my colleagues are saying. But one of the, one of the things about civic engagement, and we saw that today here. Say that I'm old school, because I'm sure somebody in the audience is gonna say she's old, she doesn't know what she's talking about. But you know what? Civic engagement starts here. Starts in the dais. It starts out there in the chamber. And what I heard today, I heard the people speak. I remember when we were in Zoom and it's not the same interpretation. Because you can hear the, but again, when you see the feelings of the people that come and speak on an issue that's important for them, then that's where we make decisions. Because otherwise, I mean, if I would just listen to somebody call and I understand, you know, some people, I mean, are in wheelchairs and it, but again, when there is an importance that is happening in the community, you show up. And that is civic engagement. That's coming in here and telling us that you don't like what you see out there. If you can. You have daughters, you've got sisters, you've got mothers, you've got... They can come and represent a family. I see kids. I see kids that have come and protested and give their opinion because that's important for them. During Zoom time, it was something that it was, that we supposed to, by law, we needed to do. And what I want to see, I want to see you all here. I want to see you come to the dais, I mean, not to the dais, to the podium and let us know where your concerns are. That's what I want to see. That's where I see the civic engagement. That's when you're gonna tell me what you guys are doing, it's wrong. So, maybe there are other options that we can look into. But bringing, I mean, bringing Zoom back to me is not the same feeling in having you there. Because I'm sure next council meeting, this room is gonna be full again. I bet you that if we had Zoom, only half of the chamber will be full. And it has happened before. So, I mean, you know what? That's my feeling. I'd rather see you all here. And, you know, we take everything that you say. Foul language, whatever you guys want to call us. At least, you know what? You're out here telling us in our faces. And we take it. So that's, those are my, those are my comments. And I hope my colleagues, I mean, respect each one, each one's comment and, you know, make the best decision that we need to make. Okay? So with that, I'll bring it back to our council.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank everybody for their comments. You know, I don't want to give up on this issue. I really want to...
Neither do I.
And, you know, but I hope we could refer this to staff to kind of look into it. I mean, and maybe look at the technologies. I mean, the, the technology is there. I mean, we're not going back. The technology exists to make this work. I really believe that. And we just want, we just gotta want it. I mean, you know, you know, next, we, you're talking about next, yeah, next time meeting. I see people here, but I see a lot of people in the hallways because they're not gonna be able to come in. Because you're gonna have other people come in here. And so they're not gonna, you know, and so, I mean, there's a, there's a... I just wish we could work something out in terms of working towards this. Maybe we don't have the answer today, but we should at least move forward to at least find a way to involve the voices of those that are not able to come to our council meetings because of the hard work that they're involved with, or whatever it is, lives that... And because the other thing is that agenda items, look at what time it is right now. People can't be around sometimes waiting for an item to come. It's just that, it just, it means that you're not gonna have the opportunity to participate. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will at least move this to staff so they could come up with something that we could really try and make it work. I'm hoping for the benefit of civic engagement, increasing participation and creating those balances, checks and balances that we need, we need the public's input. It's very important. So, those are my thoughts.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead.
This is a question that I have for one individual who has participated in a lot of community meetings, Mr. Dominguez. Hopefully you can answer my question. When you have the call-in feature, are you, as a caller, able to listen to the meeting as it's happening? Or are you on hold?
You're on hold and the meeting is going on real time. And then they're giving a queue prompt, caller ending in 6601, that's my number. You're on one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dominguez?
Okay.
If you're gonna speak into the mic...
He has to be on the mic.
Yeah, I need you to speak into the mic because nobody on YouTube can hear you.
No, no, we're not, we're not opening it up. I just had that question because I'm curious. Whether or not, doing the call-in feature, that if those that are on the call can hear...
Can the mayor open it up back to the, to the, to the audience?
No, we're not opening it back to the audience, sorry. No. But thank you.
Can they take a vote on that? Can they take, can they take a vote on that, Mr. Salinas? Can they vote on that?
No.
Open it up? Excellent, Mayor.
No, no, they're giving you an opportunity to answer the question. We just can't open it up to the audience again.
All right, yes, you can hear it in real time. You're giving a prompt, a queue, caller ending in 6601, that's my number. Unmute yourself and they give you the numbers to push in. And then you're giving one minute for the Metro and the LA County Board of Supervisors to give a public comment. They only give you one minute because if they gave everyone thirty minutes, you'd be there forever for these meetings. So, and then, and then once your time is up, you go back into the queue and you're off. But you can hear the, still hear the meeting in real time.
So you can still hear the meeting while you are on the phone?
Absolutely, while you're on hold.
I was just curious.
It's two different setups. One is, and they have a website. You can watch it on the website, but it's like a thirty-second delay because it's, it's in real time on the phone. It's a little bit back on the video.
How do you answer? Thank you. Yes, so, again, that's why I asked the question. Because if that's the case, then, you know, even if you're on YouTube, you can still listen to the meeting. And even if YouTube fades or something happens, people would still be able to know when their time is to be able to speak. That's why I needed that clarification. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. So if something like that is gonna, we're gonna take that on, are we gonna have to switch the time that everyone's gonna be allowed to speak to accommodate for everyone? We went from five to three minutes. And I'm not okay with that. So I really do hope that you take that into consideration. Because going from five minutes when we originally had it...
Everything has to be, take a look at. So, at this time, I mean, I know, I mean, it's getting a little late for everyone. So, and you need directions, provide directions to our city manager. At, right now, I am just going, I mean, I don't, I, my proposal is that, I mean, that we can take a look at this.
Madam Mayor, you can make a motion to table indefinitely and then just tell staff to bring it back.
Okay. You know what? We'll do that. We need to definitely look more into this. And, but I, when I see this item back, I don't want to see it next week. I want to make sure that we do a thorough study on the amount, how much it's gonna cost, what are the pros and the cons? And we'll move forward with that.
If that's your motion, I'll second that.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
I would agree. Maybe we can talk to those agencies and see how they conducted so that there is more participation and what the cost is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for the record, it's clear, Madam Mayor, it is a motion to table this item indefinitely, subject to the guidance given by the council members.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Thado?
Yes.
Councilmember Teos?
I want clarification on that, what you just said, stated, City Attorney. What does that mean in layman's terms?
Councilmember, it is that this item doesn't have a fixed date for, to return back to the council. And staff will have the ability to further research it and bring it back when staff believes it's appropriate.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Baron?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to comments from the audience. Okay, at this time, I'll open it to the audience that anybody that wants to speak...
Item number four.
On anything that it's not on the agenda.
Item number four. Still a public hearing.
Another public, oh my goodness. Sorry about that. Sorry, no public comments yet, I mean, non-agenda items. Item number four.
The city council will conduct a public hearing to receive public input on community needs and potential goals for consideration as part of the development of the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidated plan. Consolidated plan, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. We are bringing this first public hearing to receive input, public input on community needs and goals for the 2025-2029 CDBG Consolidated Plan. I'm gonna have Analine New from Avantgard, who is our housing consultant, give a short presentation about the consolidated plan process.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Oh, of course. Okay, so, we're here to talk about the next five years. It's your CDBG and home entitlement funds that you receive from HUD. And it's time to establish a new consolidated plan that outlines the priorities and the goals for the next five years and how you're gonna use those funds. Next slide, please. So, the five-year consolidated plan, which I'll refer to as the CON Plan, it covers, it's going to cover the program years 2025 through 2029. So it'll end June 30th of 2030. And this is for the allocation that you receive as an entitlement city of your CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, and your home funds, your Home Investment Partnership Program funds. This consolidated plan is the official document that is submitted to HUD. It needs to be, once approved by the city council, it will be accepted, reviewed. And then if accepted and approved, you'll have, you'll be eligible then to receive your next five years of funds in annual allocations. And the consolidated plan specifically addresses the critical housing and community development needs of city residents. That's what, these two funds are complementary to each other to help low, moderate income households and low, moderate income neighborhoods to have better housing, better communities and amenities to raise up those communities. Next slide, please. So the consolidate, the elements of the consolidated plan, there's a number of elements to them. The heavy, the heavy ones are the needs assessment and the housing market analysis. Those are very data-based. Currently, we are working at looking at all of the data that's available for the region, national, but mainly region and local data. It's, you use this assessment to identify, and we will provide that information to you in the draft plan. It'll identify what are the gaps that are demonstrated through data and through that analysis. Another part of it is the citizen participation. So that's the local, you know, the local voice of how you want to use the funds in an eligible way. And within that, in those COMFines, you're gonna have five action plans. So your five years, you can see them. So you have your COM Plan. And each of your five years, however you're going to use those funds, need to align with those goals. Next slide, thank you. So your current goals for the 2020 through 2024 program year, you can see them here. Administration is one of them so that you can, you know, have the funds to plan your work. And fair housing is a requirement. So that's to ensure equal access to housing opportunities that you currently get from your Fair Housing Foundation funds. Housing is another goal, and that's to preserve the supply of affordable housing. You can look at that as residential rehab. Also, code, I'm sorry, graffiti abatement is another way that it's preserving your, your housing supply. Commercial rehabilitation is another program that you use your funds for. Infrastructure and public facility improvements. The funds, you have that goal now, so you're able to program projects under that goal. Public services are a wide array of services that are used. Fifteen percent of your allocation may be used for public services. And then economic development activities. And in the past, you've used that for business assistance. There are other programs that it's also eligible for under that goal. So, I think I mentioned this. So your, your annual allocation this year was a little over 1.2 million in CDBG. And your home allocation is a little over 560,000. So when you're looking at your five-year goals, you're looking at about 6.2, sorry, 6.2 million over a five-year span and 2.8 million over a five-year span in your home. And that's provided that the federal government's gonna give you your allocation. So, there's questions about that. Next slide. So the, the objectives of the annual action plan, to meet the objectives of the annual action plan under HUD, you need to meet one of the three criterias. Predominantly, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's, the number one is benefiting low and moderate income persons. You have to have a designated SLUM or BLIT area in your community to use the second item. And then meeting a need that's a particular urgency is a very unique, a unique thing. So, even under COVID, the activities that we use the funds for did not fall under number three. So typically, it's number one, benefiting low, moderate income households. And then home funds are used to benefit also low-income households, but it's to provide eligible, affordable housing. So sometimes it's to create affordable housing, whether rental or purchase, and also doing preservation of your housing stock. Next slide. This is, these are your current annual action plan activities. Do you want me to go through them all? It's late. You can see how they're used. These are how the funds are. All of the public services add up to that fifteen percent that your, your maximum that you're allowed to use for public services. And then there are some items. There's the commercial facade, the business sign program, number nine and 10. Those are your community development activities. And then there's your home activities, which is working on an affordable housing development. And then you are also required to have a fifteen percent CHODO set aside. And that's, that's usually, you're doing that until you have a sizable amount to have a project for that. Any questions about that slide? Any questions about that side? Because I know there's a lot of information there. Okay.
Any question, council? Let me go ahead and open it to the audience.
Oh, can I, I'll just, I'm almost done, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Really quick, I, citizen participation is a big part of the CON Plan. Um, so, I, this is one of the requirements of HUD, you have to have two public hearings. So this is the first public hearing, just to receive, to give the audience or your community a chance to come in person, to state their interest on how, what's important to them on the use of these funds. Um, next slide. And then the other areas and ways that we're going to be reaching out, we are doing surveys, and we are going to be posting in the lobby a QR code to the survey. We're also going to send it all out to you, and also put it on social media, so that people can take the survey. We're also going to work with your current nonprofit organizations that you partner with, so that they can also reach out and, um, reach out to their participants, so that they can also chime in. Um, I'll be reaching out to each of you and department heads, if you're inclined to take the survey, or if you want to have a one-on-one with me, I'm, I'm happy to do an interview with you. And, um, that's it, our, next slide, please. Um, this is kind of the, the schedule, so we're, we're going to round up our data gathering, um, this month, and then we have, um, February 12 through the 20, we're going to have a CAC, that's Citizen, um, I'm so tired now, I'm sorry. Yes, Citizen Advisory Committee meetings, um, that will be, that we're having tomorrow, and the 26th, so we'll be having two meetings, um, in alignment with that, and we're covering a number of things, but one of them is the CON Plan process, as well as, um, the Action Plan recommendation, so that'll be on the 26th. And then we do, after the draft is, um, prepared, there'll be a 30-day comment period, and, um, hopefully, we'll be able to have public hearing number two on April 22nd, and, um, pending your consideration and approval. The current deadline is May 15th, provided that we do receive allocations from, um, you know, the federal government.
All right, well, thank you. Before she sits, anybody have any questions?
I only have one. Maybe we can put the survey on our website, um, just to get more participation.
Thank you.
And on the app, since we already, our numbers are growing.
Thank you. We will, thank you. Okay. So with that, um, let me go ahead and open it to the audience. Anybody in the audience, please come forward.
All right, so our city has had, our city hall officials and council members have had a monopoly over our, uh, CDBG funds, and I'm going to tell you exactly how I want the consolidated plan to, to play out, from 25, from 2025 to 2029. I want the whole thing, the whole shebang, to go towards our Department of Parks and Recreation. Uh, I think it's a disgrace, uh, the goal name, you don't even have Parks and Recreation on there. I'd like to know, h, how much of the budget, the fiscal year budget, does Parks and Recreation get? And then how much of the budget, fiscal year budget, does our police department get? And how much of the fiscal year budget does Public Works get? Because I'm pretty sure that you guys don't give shit to Parks and Recreation, they didn't get a tiny sliver of that pie. So I would like to know what those numbers are, the fiscal year budget, the current one that we're in. Now, w, with this 6.2 million dollars from the CDBG funds, are you going to get over the, approximately, are you going to get over the next five years from the consolidated plan? With that money, you can actually leverage it and go after a California State Parks grant, and you can buy land, you can build parks with that money. You could take that money and buy that vacant lot that's next to Legacy High School on Wood Avenue and turn it into a pocket park. You can take that same approach and look at parcels that are available on the west and northwest side of our city and start building pocket parks there. That, that side of our, our, of our city is a fucking desert. Those people don't have any green space, no park space, it's all on the east. And, uh, I think it's wretched that our council members have given little, uh, uh, little attention to Hollidale Regional Park. And, uh, I, I've spoken with, uh, Carol Avril, and she's already informed me that both Hollidale Regional Park and Southgate Park fall within the HUD Census, uh, Guide, uh, uh, track lines for, for qualifying to receive CDBG funds. That is where the CDBG funds should be going, towards those two parks. Uh, I want us to have great parks, and this is how you're, you're going to be able to build and develop, uh, Hollidale Regional Park. Mr. Coste keeps telling how there's, uh, a master plan for Hollidale Regional Park, he's not going to build shit with that thing, because he doesn't even have the money to pay for plans and designs. With this 6.2 million, he can actually build something, get plans and designs done, and move forward with developing that park. So that is where the CDBG funds should be going, towards park feature projects, towards park enhancement projects, towards park amenity projects, towards park rehabilitation projects, such as the roof for the, uh, the auditorium, the Boy Scout huts, all that is, is, uh, qualifies for the CDBG funds. That's the direction that I want our money to be going in, and I think you both, you all know why. I really wanted to go there, because I want that money for our splash pad.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Good evening, once again, uh, Mayor and Council. So, uh, 6 million dollars, or over 6 million dollars, a lot of money, and, uh, you know, out of the 13 line items that were up there, there was only one for infrastructure. And I think that the upgraded broadband falls under that category, uh, for infrastructure. So maybe that's something that, uh, we can allocate some of these funds to. Um, another thing that I'd like to mention in terms of infrastructure is, uh, you know, some, there's some streets out there that really can use some attention, uh, specifically the one that I live on. I know that some of my neighbors have, have expressed, uh, the sentiment that, uh, feels like they're at, back at home in Mexico, in the Rancho, the, the street feels that way. Um, right next to where Mayor Davila lives, it's on, you can check, take, I recommend that all of you guys take a drive down Mallison Avenue, San Resent Avenue, from Tweedy to Abbott, and, uh, you'll, you'll feel that same sentiment. So I, I think that you guys should definitely take a look at that area, because the streets were paved there years ago, and for whatever reason, those streets were neglected, and they were not covered. So I think that, uh, uh, some of that infrastructure money could be used there, maybe add another line item there, or a little more money, because I think it said 90,000 dollars was going towards the, uh, infrastructure. So I think those two things would definitely merit some attention. And you know, as a Parks and Rec Commissioner, i, if the whole money can go to the parks, that'd be great. I mean, we can do a lot of things. I know that, uh, a few weeks ago, or a few meetings ago, uh, someone came by and said that the, the benches by Diamond Nine and Diamond Ten were, uh, falling apart, and there were 900 dollars, I believe it was, but we still had to kind of go through the process and get that approved and, and taken care of. Uh, so again, parks can definitely benefit from some of that money. As you've heard from some of the comments previously, uh, people come from, you know, Southgate, but, but from other areas, and, and the parks are definitely the jewel of the city, and, and many people, uh, feel the same way, so I urge you guys to consider that, and, uh, maybe allocate some of that money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz Reese from Kaufman. I have to agree with my, my colleague here on the Parks Commission. Uh, our parks could definitely use the money. Um, I've, I've sat on the CAC before, and it, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work getting people to come together and, and, and make recommendations for you guys, and honestly, it, it was pretty hard, you know, being there my first time, and then seeing the recommendations get pretty much redone by you guys, which is, you know, your job. But you know, it is what it is, and I, I personally always suggested for the money to go into the infrastructure, because just seeing the way inflation grows, it's, it's been hard to keep up, and it's always going to cost more to fix things. So my recommendation would be to focus on the things that really need fixing, before they get more expensive down the line, which could even be next month, you know, if, if these tariffs go through, that our, our national leadership is pushing. Um, but I digress. Uh, on the local level, I think, you know, having, having that investment taken care of, the sooner will be the better. Um, I also agree with, you know, fixing our streets. Um, I'm always reporting a lot of the sidewalks, and, and, like I said before, they do get fixed, they get grided down, they get even, which is really good for me, because I'm super clumsy, but it's also an eyesore when, uh, they patch areas up. And, and I appreciate it, because there are areas that are just broken, like the, the whole driveway area is broken, the whole, just chunks of the, a s, street are broken, and it's just all asphalted, and it's just not nice-looking. And I, I too wonder, you know, when, when is that area going to get fixed up? I know the, surprisingly, the west side got fixed not too long ago, certain streets got redone, and it would be nice to see that, that investment go throughout the rest of the city. And even the alleyways, the alleyways are really bad. I don't think they've ever been repaved since they were first paved, because they are, uh, there's some parts where there's barely even asphalt left, so, I don't know, there's just so many things to, to suggest that it, it's hard to even prioritize. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we have any, uh, emails on this item?
We have none, Mayor.
None? Okay. We're going to bring it back to council.
Motion to receive and file.
It's, uh, to, uh, per recommendation, right, just to continue the public hearing?
Um, it's just to receive, um, information, comments, and you're obviously welcome to, um, send more information towards us, and we really want to promote the survey. So we have, um, boards out there with the QR code, and we'll be sending emails to you to forward on to your, um, constituents, so thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so, um, receiving file?
Yes. It's, it's-
I'll second.
It's, the purpose was to receive and file public input, so that's your motion.
Okay, there was a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Thado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes, and can we get the presentation emailed to us as well, please?
Yeah, I was going to ask for the same. If you can send us a presentation, please. Appreciate that, thank you. All right.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to vote.
Oh, yes.
You voted, you were going to vote for it anyway.
I said yes, I won't be here.
Is that a yes for the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, and I know we're coming down to 10:30, and we have a preview at 10:30, but we will do non-agenda items, we will finish this agenda tonight. And, um, and public comments, anybody that would like to speak on items that are not in the agenda, please come forward.
All right, so at the last city council meeting, I asked you lame-ass fucks to make a motion to put an item on the agenda for the, for the next meeting, for this meeting, to, for us to have, uh, 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 for the council members to have a debate and a discussion whether or not for us to move forward, having a splash pad built at Southgate Park. And, you know, rotters that you are, you, you didn't do it. So what I want to share with you is, Linwood is on the move. Behind St. Francis Medical Center, the, Linwood is going to build a splash pad for their residents. Right now, they completed Phase One, which is a playground, on, uh, Caesar Chavez Lane and Birch Avenue. Phase Two, next to it, is going to be a splash pad. So I had a chance to speak with Jose Trejo, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Linwood. Their plans and designs are going to be done spring 2025. And he said, check back, check, I should check back with him in March to, to go over the project, but I asked him, so how are you going to fund this thing? He said, what were you going to use Measure A funds? Oh, wow, that's interesting. So then I got ahold of a gentleman by the name of Oleg Balak, Balakianian, Balakianian? Armenian gentleman, he's the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Glendale. So Glendale has three splash pads, they're currently building their fourth, it's going to be done at the end of this month. So this splash pad is 1,500 square feet, and I asked Mr. Balakianian, so how much are you going to spend for this project? He said, it's going to cost us 2.5 million for the splash pad, they're going to renovate restrooms, they're going to put canopy up above it, they're going to put an outdoor shower, but I asked Mr. Balakianian, so how much is the splash pad itself? Just, just the cost of construction for that? He said, for the, for the 1,500 square foot splash pad, what, he used the term deliverables, all the gear, all the equipment, all the, the pumps, all, all the mechanics that go into operating the splash pad, and the cost of installation, that alone, $600,000. Folks, do the math. Glendale's going to get a 1,500 square foot splash pad for $600,000. I want ours to be 3,000 square feet, you're looking at 1.2 million dollars. With 2 million dollars, we, we could easily cover this, get it fenced off, and put an outdoor shower next to it. And, uh, uh, when I asked Mr. Balakianian, so how are you going to fund and pay for yours? Well, we can't use our ARPA funds, because we've already spent them, so we're going to use Measure A funds and CDBG funds. Well, how do you like that, folks? The very approach that I want us to take in pursuing our splash pad, Glendale is doing that. That is proof of concept right there, that Glendale's doing it. Uh, another discovery that I found out this past, uh, yesterday, Paramount, so, has a splash pad. So to the north of us, Bell has a splash pad, to the west of us, Honeydon Park has two splash pads. To the southwest of us, Linwood is on the move, they're going to get, they're going to get their plans and designs done in spring of this year, and south of us, Paramount already has a splash pad. To the east of us, even whittier, they have three splash fountains and one splash pad. Real quick, tomorrow, I'm going to go to the City's, the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I'm going to ask for 160,000 for plans and designs for a, a splash pad.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Liz Reese from Kaufman. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, say that during the last council meeting, uh, you all kind of made the, um, or actually, it was, uh, Member Thado brought up the, uh, the, the issue about bringing in more businesses to Southgate. Um, and so I wanted to bring to your awareness, uh, the need for our city to tread carefully heading through that road, and for that, I wanted to bring awareness to what's happening into Larry. I know I mentioned it to a couple of you guys, and I forwarded the link to you guys earlier to read the full article, the, to read the full, um, uh, notice on this, but in December of 2024, the City of Tulare, um, Council approved the zoning or, zoning ordinance update to allow cold storage facilities to be built there, and they did this without saying that they were actually, that they were exempt from SEQA review, and so our Attorney General Bonta disagreed, and so now they're getting sued. And so I really want to highlight that, because I see the importance of bringing in businesses, uh, especially when some of, you know, these areas aren't being used to their highest potential. But I think that, and, and I know that you guys know that we need to do it right, you know, if there are any environmental concerns, they need to go through the SEQA review, and everything needs to be done by the book. I am a taxpayer, I own property here, and I don't want my taxes to be used fighting litigation, and I can assure you that there will be litigation. We have two very strong community groups that work in our area, Communities for a Better Environment, for which I'm a board member, and there's East Yards Communities, who are also organizing in the area, so I really want to, you know, let you guys know that there are a lot of people looking at these things, and we need to be very careful with what and how we bring businesses into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and I'm going to close the audience. Do we have any emails?
We have none, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Staff report, Arturo.
Yes, Mayor, I was requested to bring an update on the construction of the Tweedy Mile Project, if we can put up the slide. I just wanted to provide three quick updates. Construction on Tweedy Mile is going well, it's on schedule, it'll be completed in late, uh, April. It's on schedule to be completed on the accelerated schedule, or the shorter schedule. Right now, the contractors are working on removing the pavers, one section at a time, so they're not visible in the entire corridor. And next, they'll start working on the street furniture. They are working daily, except on rain days, so I know that was important to the council. Circle Park on schedule to be completed in May of 2025. They're working on the footsaw and equipment cords, parking lots and pathways, and then the urban orchard is going really well, the construction has really ramped up, on schedule it'll be completed in June of 2025, and right now, the contractor's working on storm drain planting and irrigation improvements. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We had a very successful grand opening, uh, at the end of January for our new park in Hollidale Community. Uh, great, uh, community input and time there, so good time there. Uh, but besides that, I have nothing else to report.
All right, thank you.
No, no items, Madam.
No items, okay. Finance?
Okay.
Nellie, good to see you.
Good evening. Happy early birthday.
Oh, thank you. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. City manager?
Nothing.
City attorney?
Nothing, nothing this time.
Okay, city treasurer?
Nothing needed to report.
All right, great.
I have nothing, but I also wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Early birthday on the 14th.
Thank you.
Valentine's Day.
Okay, Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended last week a meeting with the Southeast Water Coalition. Very interesting that we had a conversation with WORD and the Metropolitan Water Department. A lot of things are coming down the pipeline. Sad to report that we are probably gonna be looking at water increases coming down the pipeline in the near future. But a lot of exciting things are gonna be happening because the Metropolitan Water Department is building a pure water filtration system in Carson. So they invited the community to come out and take tours. So I will be providing that information to the city manager so that we can post on our website. Other than that, happy early birthday.
Thank you.
And again, just being mindful of the community that is out there. I also sit on vector control and if there's any standing water, please empty it out because unfortunately, these mosquitoes do have a lot of illnesses that they carry that are still very prevalent in our community. COVID is still out there, so just be mindful, wear masks when possible, and let's just be kind to each other, even though we probably disagree at times. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hurtado, I'm forgetting people's name now.
Maybe it's another year you're having, right? You're starting to forget this stuff. All right, so I got a few things, I'll try to go fast. So we did talk about CDBG. Just as everybody's been watching, that's up in limbo. I keep track of a lot of the stuff that's going on at the state level and federal level. And there are two reasons why we have to be careful with the federal funding. One is because of the freeze on federal funding that was put by President Trump. And the other is that there's an ongoing feud between the president and the governor of the state of California. And the governor has already made it clear that, you know, there's a lot of issues with immigration policies, current policies that he does not agree with. And President Trump has made it clear that he's gonna hold back on those cities and states that are not in compliance. So it's very unfortunate what's happening at the federal level, but again, it's important to know that we're gonna go with business as usual, we're gonna go ahead and make our votes based on the CDBG funding and pretend that there's nothing happening. And hopefully, the money does come in and we're able to proceed with some of these projects. You know, I'm glad to see that people come into the meetings. As you saw tonight, I had to ask for legal advice to say something and that's because we have rules and we cannot violate those rules. And there are times where people in the audience want to scream something out, that's also not allowed. And the way it typically works is the mayor opens it up to the audience. After the audience finishes speaking, we can't open it up again. And so sometimes people are saying, no, they're trying to keep us quiet. No, we're trying not to violate the law. If we were to do that, we're in violation of the Brown Act. So again, I just hope that people who are here and the people who are listening at home can understand, we gotta make sure that we're not in violation of any laws because we are subject to some liability.
Now, Councilmember Hurtado, just to add to that is that the comments that are made today could be the basis for review by judicial tribunal. And they're going to want to hear those comments. And if the record is mumbled because we have people not at the mic, we have people talking over, that doesn't help anyone. And so your comments are well received and noted.
Thank you. And the reason I say that is because there's, you know, we know that, but the members of the audience don't. And I want people in the audience to understand, we're not trying to keep you from saying anything, you're welcome to come in. As you heard, the other gentleman who just stepped out right now, he uses very colorful language and there's nothing we can do. He's allowed to do that. I apologize all the time to families who say, hey, my child was listening to the meeting and some guy was using profanity. Why didn't you guys stop them and have to explain to them that freedom of speech covers that? So unfortunately, those things happen, but we have to comply with the law. There's a couple of things that people have brought up in terms of speed bumps, signal lights, stop signs that they want the city to go out and put, and they demand this, they demand that. And there's a process for that, too. As much as we'd like to just go ahead and, you know, address the issues, put speed bumps where people want them, stop signs where people want them, crossing, all of that is controlled by certain processes that we have to put in place. And that includes traffic studies. Am I correct? Yes. And so at the end of the day, we may want to comply, we can have this place filled, we can have petitions brought in to do something, but the traffic, for that. And again, we have to comply with that part of the law. And finally, the last thing I want to cover is, again, I appreciate the updates that we get from our staff all the time, but I just want to remind staff, when we give an update, that means that we give an update to people in the community. And sometimes, you know, there were some people who asked me when the urban orchard was gonna be done, for example, and I was told it was in April. And I went ahead and told all kinds of people, it's in April, and then it turns out it's not gonna be done till June. So again, if there's anything that changes, you gotta let us know, okay, on all things park-related, public works-related, anything. I mean, it's just important because again, we have to respond to the people and will we give them information that we got from staff? And things change, it just doesn't look good. So again, I would appreciate, Rob, that we kinda do a little bit better job. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Rios.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, let's see, thank everybody in the audience for staying with us this late. I know it's late, but I also wanted a follow-up on just one thing. When we were at the safety school collaborative meeting, someone talked about an incident on Madison, right, on Madison School, crossing guard. I wanted to know if we followed up on that because someone said that there was a crossing guard there, we didn't assign it, so I'm concerned about the safety of that area, too. So because I know it's in between Linwood and South Gate. So any follow-up on that because, you know, it is a safety concern.
There's no follow-up. He made an assertion that there was a crossing guard, so our crossing guards weren't there. So if there was a parent or somebody from the school that assigned that, then that's great, but there was no follow-up on that. Somebody just made an claim that there was a crossing guard there.
Because the school is in South Gate and I know that crossing the street is Linwood, right? So, you know, do we know that, what do we know about that? Is that a heavy traffic area? I'm just concerned that if somebody's telling us, hey, you know, there's, the kids are letting out.
Can you tell me the street again? It's Madison and what cross street?
No, it's Tweedy.
State.
And State.
Oh, Tweedy and State. So there was a little bit of follow-up on our end in terms of providing information, which I can provide information to the council, but in essence, some years ago, the council set a goal to improve safety on Tweedy Boulevard and we pursued a capital improvement program, which is called the Tweedy Mile Complete Streets Project. The heaviest emphasis on that project is pedestrian safety along that entire corridor. So what we're doing for that entire corridor is improving pedestrian crossings from north to south for school and what have you. State Street is not included because it already has a traffic signal, but we're doing numerous improvements on Tweedy, like eliminating a crosswalk on one side of the intersection. So we centralized crossings, we're adding, at four locations, we're adding flashing lights with crosswalks and further protected crosswalks to get you from one side to the other, we're narrowing the roadway. So when we look at what is a city doing to improve safety on Tweedy, exception, you know, that State Street intersection, which is not fully in South Gate, by the way, we're improving the entire corridor. So when this project is done, you're gonna see a tremendous improving in safety. There's a second project that has yet another four crosswalks that we're gonna be adding for, that are gonna be with flashing beacons as well. So in the end, our goal is to put flashing beacons at almost all of the crossings that are non-signalized on Tweedy. So there's a lot of work that is being done. I'll provide an exhibit to council so that you guys can visually see this. And I'd be glad to present it as part of my CIP update on the next council meeting.
And this is part of phase two?
This is part of phase one.
One.
So phase one is the massive improvement. Phase one includes four of those flashing beacons with crosswalks. We have a phase two project that's outside the Tweedy Mile that covers Alameda to Atlantic.
Right.
And then, but we have another smaller project that just includes those four crossings on Tweedy.
Can you send us like an update of when those phases are gonna start?
Yes, I'll bring that to the next council meeting as my.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Barone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you, everybody, for being here with us today and thank you for the people that are still here with us today. I know it's a long night. But I do want to just touch on the South Gate Junior Athletic Association. I sit on the board there and we're currently taking registrations for baseball and softball from ages five to 17. So if you're interested in playing baseball or softball, please come out to register. We're also looking for coaches. Our divisions that we have for our teams is really limited by the number of coaches. So we have five coaches. I know I can sign up so many players, right? If we have six coaches, we can sign up more players. So if anybody's interested in being a coach, please come to the JAA's office. We're located right by the skate, the skate park and the snack shack there and at the park, Monday through Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30 and from Saturday from 9:30 to 12:00 PM. Again, I grew up at the park, I've been playing at that park since I was seven years old in teams. Gil's my coach for quite a while when I was 10 years old out there. So I, that's why I decided to give back and make sure that I continue that, the effort and make sure that that program stays successful. My daughters were raised playing there, my three daughters, and it's been very beneficial for them and for the whole family. So if we can make an impact and you wanna volunteer, please come out and let us know. Also, I want to just touch in a little bit on what Liz Reese, you know, was saying regarding, you know, what was found at the other cities, that that is an exact reason why I'm proud that our city council voted for an environmental impact review of, for the entire city, right? Because a lot of things that we decide to do or any businesses that we are looking to bring in, we understand that there's gonna be impacts to the community and we needed this review to happen so that we can understand what is the best approach for certain type of businesses and if we can even conduct rezoning. So I'm very appreciative that the majority of the council voted to approve that and that we were able to do that because this allows us to make sure that we're not falling into a trap where other cities are making decisions without going through the proper protocol and proper procedure and now they're being held liable and in lawsuits and trying to figure out. That's not what we're trying to do here. We're, yeah, we're, all the state commissions, we're trying to stay ahead of that, we're trying to understand what is possible and we're trying to make sure that when we bring things to our community, we understand the impacts and also how the benefits of it. So I'm very proud of that. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just very quick, I'm not gonna report on everything that I attended because I do want to make sure that we are out of here by 11:00. Just very quick, last week, I, we had a trip up to Sacramento and again, we continued going up there to ask for funding for the Gayway City Line, which is, which is, which was called the Icaraba Transit, but not the Gayway City Line. We continued going up there, we met with the Secretary of State of Transportation and they all know about the project, it's just continue asking for funding. So we, right now, we are asking for 300, 300 million to be part, I mean, to, so they can put it in their budget, this, this coming budget. And we will continue going up there. Another, we are also planning to go up to Washington DC. Again, we know that there are gonna be cuts and, but again, we need to continue moving forward with this project and we will be visiting some of the, the new administration's, I guess, you know, people to see, I mean, to ask for funding for this project. We need to continue moving forward. So that's, it was pouring, it was pouring, it pours up there. But again, rainy season, it's not over, please take care. I know it's gonna start soon, make sure that you guys drive safely and have a happy Valentine's Day. So, yeah, so with that, we'll move on to warrants. City auditor.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for February 11th, 2025. The grand total is $3,556,032.22.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and take this time to open up to any member of the audience who have any questions regarding the warrant register for this review. Seeing none, any emails?
No emails.
Madam Clerk? What are the wishes of council?
Motion to approve.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes. Thank you, city auditor. And with that, before we adjourn, we are adjourning in memory of Robert Todd, our former chief of police. So with that, we are adjourned. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.